Welcome to the April 8th Board of Selectmen's meeting. All members are present. We had an executive session for the purposes of discussing strategies with respect to collective bargaining with the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees, AFSMI Local 1703, Unit 2. In accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town. And to approve executive session minutes of Tuesday, November 13th, November 26th, and December 10th of 18, January 14th, and January of 19, and March 11th, and March 25th of 19, as well as March 25th of 19. Okay, thank you. And would you all join me, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Aye. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, liberty, and justice for all.
I would like to mention that the members of the Board of Selectmen, and the Town Manager, and Beverly Dalton, the Assistant to the Town Manager, is all wearing an article of clothing or an item of blue for Autism Month, for the month of April. Okay, on to transmitting of the Treasury Warrants 3939A, 40 and 40A. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bendel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCoy. Any discussion on the Treasury warrant? All in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, on to our first appointment, and that's with Robert G. Peterson, Esquire, on behalf of Shop Right Liquors, doing business as Eli's Country Store. Request for change of manager from Michael Eli to Michael Eli Jr. Mr. Peterson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Town Manager Hall and members of the Board. As indicated by the Chairman, this is a request on behalf of Shop Right Liquors, Inc., for a change of manager from Michael Eli to Michael Eli Jr. To put it simply, Madam Chairman, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, the Elies have decided that it's time that Mike Jr. Assume the managerial role in the store. He's been the de facto manager for some time, and Mr. Eli Senior has decided to step aside.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so before I -- well, let me ask my colleagues if they have any questions first, before I go to the public. I'll miss.
I'll just say, I don't have any questions. I don't have a problem supporting it, and you guys have the best antipasto out there.
Okay, I'll turn to the public. Does anybody have any questions on this? Okay. Hearing done. I'm going to ask the Town Manager, is there any recommendations on the -- so I have from the Police Department, upon review of the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of the change in manager to Michael J. Eli Jr. of Shop Right Liquors, DBA Eli's Country That is, that was the only recommendation. Okay. All right, let's have a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Eaton, second by Mr. Bendel. Any discussion? All in favor? And that's unanimous. Okay. Now we'll have a motion to accept the change from Michael Eli to Michael Eli Jr.
Move to grant the request?
Second.
Mr. Bendel, second by Mr. Eaton. Any discussion? All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, gentlemen.
That's it. Okay, we're a bit ahead of schedule for the next appointment, but I think we'll move on. Everybody, I think, is here. And that's on a discussion with the North Wilmington Train Station, and we have some individuals who are with us this evening. Jeff, you want to introduce them for us?
Yes, we have our legislative delegation here, certainly Senator Bruce Tar, Representative David Robertson, and Representative Kenneth Gordon. And we have representatives from the MBTA.
Now, do we want them to come to the side or up front?
Perhaps the legislative delegation can take a seat at the table here.
We also have our Deputy Chief here, Bill Cavanaugh, is with us.
And, yes.
Our Police Chief, Joe Desmond, is here with us as well.
So this is really a follow-up from a conference call that took place a couple of weeks ago. We've had at least two or three conference calls at this point, looking to address the issue in North Wilmington of the MBTA commuter trains that stop on Middlesex Ave. to pick up or drop off passengers during instances where emergency response is trying to get up to North Wilmington via Middlesex. There have been instances where that has been a problem, obviously, and given the nature of many of these calls, it's important that EMS and police have access as quickly as possible to those areas. It appears, based upon the information we've received from speaking with our legislative delegation and the MBTA representatives, that the largest problem is really for the inbound trains, because the platform is not, or there is really not a platform for the inbound trains. And so, the discussion that took place most recently contemplated the prospect of discontinuing the flag stop arrangement that currently exists for the inbound trains. The MBTA did a survey, I believe it was back in January or February, and noted particular stops, in this case, these are all inbound trains, to Boston, 11:18 a.m., 12:34 p.m., 2:29 p.m., 9:39 p.m., and 11:19 p.m. And in one case, at 12:34 p.m., there was one passenger that got off the train, and then at the 11:19 p.m. train, there was one person that got on the train. Other than that, there was no activity on any of those stops. And so, one of the things that's been suggested as a possibility is that, at least on a trial basis, the train be allowed to continue through at its normal rate of speed. And so, really, the intent tonight, I think, is to talk about that option and perhaps other options, get input from the public, and then decide how to proceed.
Thank you. Would anyone like to speak on this issue?
Sure.
So, first of all, Mr. Chairman, thank you for having us tonight to talk with you about this issue, and thank you for the dialogue that we have had over the last several weeks between the Town Manager, some members of the Board of Selectmen, and the legislative delegation, and the MBTA. Clearly, we all are very concerned about the situation of delays that might be caused in emergency response as a result of the train being in the street on Middlesex Ave. Route 62. And that concern was highlighted when we did have a fatality not all that long ago. And at the time of that fatality, there was an incident where there was a delayed response because the train was in the street, and we all find that to be completely unacceptable. I would point out that we really have a long-term and a short-term perspective here. In the short-term, we're trying to minimize the number of times when the train could be in the road, and hence delay an emergency response. And I would be very quick to point out that the MBTA has already made some operational changes to try to reduce that possibility, even without a scheduling change of the nature that we're here to discuss tonight. They have operationally sought to ensure that the train is out of the street as much as is possible, and done that through directives to the engineers and the folks that are operating the train. So in the short-term, we're trying to minimize the opportunities for those delays and those interactions. And in the long-term, we're still committed to hopefully at some point revitalizing the station and creating the infrastructure that will allow the train to pull out of the street at all times, so that we can maximize the opportunity, particularly for folks with physical challenges, to use the train, but also, again, to ensure that in the foreseeable future, or for the indefinite future, the train would not be in the street and we have adequate platforms. Now, in order to accomplish the second part of that, we need some relief from some of the requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act as interpreted by the federal government. And I would be very quick to point out, the MBTA is trying to work with us to potentially secure some of those waivers, so that we could do that. And we've been working in the legislative delegation to try to put resources in place, so if that happens, we'd be able to capitalize on the opportunity to revitalize the station, and maybe also improve its appearance, given the fact that it is a gateway to the community, and we all want to put our best foot forward when it comes to rail transit. So, having said all of that, tonight, we want to particularly focus on the short-term. The MBTA has provided us with a lot of good information relative to the ridership. Jeff has recited the salient points of that information. And this is the kind of a decision that we can, number one, undertake in the near-term that does not have to be permanent. So the schedule, as I understand it, changes roughly every six months, so we could institute a change and have it be scheduled now, but revisit it sometime in the fall to see if there's been any inconvenience to anyone who might otherwise use the train. And our thought was that that's the kind of a decision that not only should we make with you, but we should make it in a public forum, so that folks understand what's happening, and that they understand the consequences of it, and if someone might be aggrieved by that type of a decision, they'd have a fair opportunity to register those complaints or those concerns. So hopefully, tonight, we'll be able to find a way potentially to move forward and further reduce the opportunity for a conflict between emergency response and the train being in the street. And obviously, every time we reduce the number of stops, we reduce the chance of that happening, but there is a balance here that we have to reach together, so that we meet the needs of the ridership of the train, but also protect public safety. And we're very lucky to have both Cory and Jody with us tonight, who I know can answer questions. But that is the way that I would frame it, and I defer to my colleagues.
No, I completely agree. I think the Senator did a great job outlining it, so I won't be repetitive, except in the aspect that I want folks with their, out there watching in the public, or who might see this in the press and the like, that these will not impact the morning commuters, these proposed changes. That was absolutely top priority for both the town officials that worked on this, the chiefs, the T., and for us in the delegation. This isn't going to stop people getting from to the city in the morning. The proposed stops have had extremely low, if any, ridership. A number of the sample points we'll see from the MBTA data cited zero people getting on and off regularly at those stops. So while it may be a long shot inconvenience for that person, that may take it once a month, you know, given the proximity, again, of the central Wilmington station, the low ridership at these times, and the loss of life that came from it, just trying to balance it out, we really only target the stops, again, that would be of zero inconvenience, and also would allow our emergency services to respond within their acceptable and sometimes legally binding response times they're required to do so. So again, if you're out there in the community, folks are worried, hey, I dropped my kid off at school, I grabbed the 8:38. We're not touching any of those which had regular ridership. These are just kind of trains showing up to empty dead ghost platforms. That's all.
Thank you. And the only thing that, and this isn't even to add, because you've both done a great job explaining, the positions that we've discussed and what we bring to the public, which is that we want to make this decision once and after today, when we have an opportunity to hear from the public, because that's a very important position that we're in. We're looking for the balance to try to impact as few, to create as little inconvenience as possible, but really to solve this problem. So thank you very much for giving us this opportunity.
Yeah, and this is why I called this meeting together, so we can discuss it and get some input from the public, to see how they feel on it. And I'm hoping that we'll have some questions and comments regarding this. It certainly doesn't mean that tonight we're going to do away with these stops, but we want to have a discussion, so we can get the input from residents, and I've received a few when this came out as well. And the ones that I've received, they, the individuals that I talked to didn't want there to be a stop. They wanted to continue on the way it is, as a flag stop. Now, a flag stop is that, a stop and where a person is on the area of the train, and the train slows down to the point where it can stop when it sees someone flagging them down. And if there's no one there, it will continue through at a slow rate of speed. I believe that's the way it was explained, so. So I open it up to my colleagues.
Sure. Gentlemen, thank you very much for being here tonight, and thank you for your support on this. Certainly, as you all mentioned, we're all in agreement that something needs to be done, that a very tragic death back in June is unacceptable. Not to say that maybe was the cause of death, but certainly, we never want to be faced with a situation that could. And so certainly, we all agree on that. The one concern I have, that we're hearing from folks, is about the cost. Correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe the manager could give me the specific number. We pay somewhere in the order of $513,000 a year to the MBTA. Will there be any reduction in cost if we bypass these stops during the day? So I don't know if that's a question I should direct to the MBTA, gentlemen?
Yeah, I don't believe there would be, but I think we should defer to our experts.
Well, I'm not quite an expert in the assessments that happen, but I can get that answer for you. I don't owe you an answer to that.
So you see where I'm getting at? I'm saying that, you know, certainly, if we're going to be giving up something, we're still paying the same amount.
The assessment's tied to the amount of service that any community gets. I don't believe that's how it's done, but we can absolutely come back to an answer for that.
That'd be great, because that was one of the things that I heard from folks. Other than that, I think everybody's in agreement that something needs to be done, and certainly, I'm glad you touched upon the long-term and the short-term. This is a short-term fix, if you will. And long-term, I know that you, you and your office particularly, have allocated some money for us to be able to get that ramp fixed up, so that it will be handicap accessible, and that we won't have this problem going forward. So I really appreciate that, and I know people are really grateful for that. We look forward to it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome, Senator, Representative, Representative. We pay a very large assessment in this community. Jeff, how much do we spend?
It's a little over $518,000.
I just wanted to hear from the Chief of School Officer. We want to make sure we deliver, you know, the goods to the folks in the community. And I have talked to a couple of residents that live in that area, and to, believe it or not, they don't want to see the train stop discontinued. I see my good friend in the audience, I don't know if I want to mention, but Jim Buckley, who lives in that area, and I just don't make this up, he doesn't really want to see those stops discontinued. And I know we talked about funding. Everything comes down to funding, and I appreciate the fact that you've got like a million-something to do some work down there. But guys, it comes down to funding. I know you can't look into a crystal ball, but what do you see down the road? Are we going to get the dollars and cents to actually do something, to do it right? Because we're talking about the American Disabilities Act. We really need a platform on both sides. That would just come down, but I want to stress on something. I'm interested in not eliminating those stops. And I know some folks would want to do that, but we pay a lot of money to the MBTA, and I would want to see those stops, none of those stops discontinued. They should continue. And through you, Mr. Chairman, if I could ask our legislative delegation, it all comes down to funding. What do you see down the road, you know, for dollars? I mean, there must be a time that you're going to address this.
So, a couple of thoughts. Mike, first of all, the concerns you're raising are the very reason we wanted to have this conversation tonight, because this is a decision that we should make together, and not in a vacuum. So I'm glad that you're raising those concerns and reflecting the concerns of others in your constituency. I would suggest that it isn't just a funding issue. Funding is critically important and probably the most important factor, but there is also some regulatory, again, relief that we would need to secure. And I would defer to the folks from the MBTA, but I would say this. My understanding is that there are a number of stations that are similar to the North Wilmington station, in terms of their inability to meet the current regulations if we were to try to construct the infrastructure we would need to facilitate full accessibility. So the MBTA is currently lobbying the federal government, and I believe there are about 17 stations, if I'm not mistaken, that are on a list that the MBTA is advocating for to get those kinds of exceptions. And this doesn't mean, by the way, that we're looking to disregard the ADA. It means that we're trying to tailor the requirements of the ADA to the particular situation we're in. And what that means in this case, again, as I understand it, is that we would be talking about using mini-high platforms as opposed to full-high platforms. That reduces costs. It also fits the geography and the geometry of the station. When it comes to money, we have been successful in putting $2 million in a bond bill, but as we've talked about before, that does not guarantee funding. It means we are eligible to be in the capital spending plan that the administration produces every year on a rolling five-year basis. So we'd still have to fight to get that money released. I would anticipate that that wouldn't be enough to do everything we would need to do. And usually in these projects, there's a requirement of several different funding sources. So we would anticipate the MBTA might use some of its own source revenue, we would try to deliver the state resources that I've described, and then we might even need to find additional sources to that. So, we envision trying to do that, but in order to sequence things properly, Mike, we need to see first how much of a task lies ahead. So we're waiting to see what success the MBTA has in being able to make this possible from a regulatory standpoint, and then I think it's fair to say, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but we're prepared to roll up our sleeves really hard and get the resources that it would take. Right now, we don't even know what that number is, because we don't have a design, and the reason we don't have a design is because we don't have a design standard that we would need to be responsive to.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, but the folks in North Wilmington deserve a good train station, like the folks in the center.
Yeah.
You know, we need to do that.
Yeah.
You know, we just can't start talking about taking away a few stops, because there are some individuals that may want to come back to the town at those times. And it's important, if they're working in the town and they depend on the MBTA for transportation, we're spending over half a million dollars. I bet you that's a lot more than compared to most of the communities around that go down that track. You know, so I really hope to think that you do roll up your sleeves and you deliver and take care of that, because the people deserve no less. Thank you.
Sure. May I answer some of that?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, that's okay. First off, I don't want to focus any confuse. This won't affect people coming out of town at all. This is inbound. There's a few times outbound does stop for those who might have handicapped, accessible issues on hand. And yeah, we want to deliver the best services. And again, I feel comfortable, I don't want to pigeonhole my colleagues into agreeing with it, but I feel comfortable saying that we want to deliver. We want to do it in a way that also respects the rate of taxpayers here, which is why the Senator was speaking regards to the waiver. What is clear is that we don't have a final fiscal number that we can point saying, this is what we're bringing the entire station if we don't get the ADA waiver in. And what we do know is that's probably four or five times more than a mini-high, similar to what's in the center of town and serves the residents well. So what we're looking to is strike a balance that delivers the best costs, while also simultaneously checking off all the boxes of quality service. Hence why we're going through this waiver process. What we want to do is not necessarily roll up our sleeves and just haul back mountains of money. Again, that's irresponsible to the taxpayers. We want to do it in a way that protects their wallets, but also delivers the services needed. So, so I wanted to clear it up, and elimination may be the right word to use for this, but it's just a temporary one. I explained to folks, it's more of a suspension until we can get that permanent solution in place, and the service will then be fully restored, and to a much higher degree than they've come to expect now.
I appreciate that, Representative. Thank you.
If I could, just to bring us back to really the conversation that brings us here, which is the fact that these trains, when left waiting for passengers, or when slowing down for the flag stop, has become a problem for traffic in Wilmington. So just as the few passengers that have used the train during these times, and it's been very few, we also have to consider, and I'd ask you to also consider, the situation affecting the residents who are waiting while the train is going through, and on one tragic incident there was a wait that caused, that at least exacerbated to the life of that person. That's what really brought this conversation between us, Town Manager Hall, you were there, and the Selectmen were there, Mr. Kyra. We're looking at both, essentially, the situation involving both of those types of residents, and so that's the balance that we have, we are here to talk about.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, before we move on, I also want to credit the Police and Fire Departments for their collaboration with us. They have been represented in every discussion, and they are the primary focus of the short-term discussion, and in many ways, the long-term discussion as well. So I would just point out our gratitude to both departments for always being represented in the conversation.
Yes, Mr. [inaudible].
I want to thank the three of you for being here, and I know that this has been an ongoing conversation for quite some time, and I wanted to thank the three of you for your continued involvement in that. Senator Tar, you had referenced that some short-term fixes had been made. I was wondering if either you, or perhaps this should be directed to the gentleman from the MBTA, what exactly has happened to mitigate some of the issues?
I can take that one. So I'm John Ray, I'm the Assistant General Manager of the MBTA for commuter rail and ferries. So we've issued special instructions to the locomotive engineers and the conductors on the trains. So when they actually make the station stop at North Wilmington, we have them use a portion of the train that typically is not used in the midday. They typically will load the area that's closest to the locomotive, which is the outbound end of the train, but when they stop the outbound end of the train at the platform, that leaves the back end of the train stretched out across Middlesex Ave. So we've now told them to pull forward and load the back of the train. What happens is it doesn't, if somebody gets on there, it doesn't line up with platforms as they make the rest of the stops along the line, but, you know, for most people, they can make their way through the train to get up to the spots, other than in Wilmington where we use the back of the train. Everything else would be at the front of the train. That situation doesn't work when we're using the, for inbound trains, which is why we're looking at the inbound trains to make a change with the schedules. And we're not actually looking to make that. We're offering that as a way to cure the problem. So on an inbound move, as the trains are approaching the Middlesex Ave, and then they slow down to be able to stop on that 30-foot-long platform, they are, you know, they're crawling at that point. The gates are down the whole time, because that, the gates are actually coming down, expecting that train's going to go shooting right through there and not stop. So the gates are down long before they get to the platform, and then they go very slow in case someone steps out from behind a box or out of their automobile onto the platform, we have to be able to stop and get them. That keeps those gates down for quite a period of time, because it's expecting a train coming by at speed, and then the train comes by at probably less than five miles an hour to be able to stop on the platform should someone appear on the platform. The idea is, if we don't have a flag stop there, that train will go through at speed. The gates will be down in just over 20 seconds as the gate, as the train passes through there.
Do you have the amount of time that the gates are down for the flag stop? Assuming nobody's getting on? If nobody's getting on?
Yeah, it's probably a minute or more. I mean, it's not, it's not a huge number, but, you know, when it happens over and over again, and we're doing that, and nobody's getting on the train, that's one of the, that's that balance that, you know, you guys are being asked to take a look at, is, you know, what's the best for the community?
Okay. I'm going to put the Deputy Fire Chief, Cavanaugh, the new Police Chief, Mr. Desmond, on the spot. Has there been any noticeable difference in instances where the train, the gates being down have blocked emergency response vehicles?
So since the beginning of the year, there's been five that have been logged, that have been documented. Doesn't mean it's, that's all there is, but it's five cases where someone discovered it and called it in.
Okay.
That's since January.
Do you have any sense for whether or not that's an improvement over prior months?
At this point, that does seem to be a reduction from law, this time last year.
Good, thank you. I did, I take the 651 train in Wilmington Center. I know there's only 198 spots in Wilmington Center, and at that point, at 6:51 in the morning on a regular weekday, the lot is getting close to being full. It's not full yet, but I would imagine it would probably fill up by the time the 716 train showed up. And that's with 198 spots in Wilmington Center. The, I know your website lists, it's only 20 spots, spaces at the North Wilmington Station, but I did ask Station, but I did ask Mr. Hall, and there are fifty-three, and I know that those are town-owned, and the town isn't charging for them. Everybody who parks at the Wilmington Station is paying six bucks a day to park, and the fifty-three spots that is on the town-owned lot in North Wilmington is free, and I think the combination of those two things, it being free and there being a quarter of the number of spaces, that fills up pretty quickly. So, by seven o'clock, that lot is full. I say this because I'm very hesitant, call me a cynic, to eliminate flag stops. And I'm not the expert here, so I would certainly defer to the emergency responders of fire and police department as to their opinion on this, but my own skepticism is rooted in if we lose those spots, just the flag stops, are we actually going to get those back? And I understand it, because I ride the MBTA, you guys have new schedules every six months, I'm being told. But I think it does set a dangerous precedent when stops are eliminated, and the last available data shows that there's not much ridership there when, my hope is, and I don't want to put you on the spot, Mr. Robinson, but you and I had a conversation about a week and a half ago where there is some hope to adding spaces, at least in the Wilmington Station, and I do think as a policy, a public policy, we should be trying to encourage ridership. I understand that the Anderson-Wuburn Station is close enough for a lot of Wilmington residents to use, and the lot is never filled to capacity. It's huge. But I do think with roughly twenty-three thousand residents to have roughly two hundred and fifty spots in town for two train stations, that hopefully we could do a little bit better. And I don't know, I'm not saying this because I think it's a good idea, but I want to, I think, just dip my toes in the pool as to whether or not the MBTA would be interested in trying to increase parking around the North Wilmington, North Commuter Rail Station.
I can tell you that would be an asset question by every community we serve today. So, there's a long list out there, and even the Anderson Station is getting close to capacity, you know, as we're seeing it now. Ridership on the commuter rail over the past four years is up about twenty-two percent. That translates into a lot of people looking for parking spaces. Stations that historically had hundreds of empty spaces are now at capacity again by seven-thirty, eight o'clock in the morning. So, it's a big problem. It's something that we're looking at everywhere. You know, the problem is if you look around the downtown station, there's not a lot of vacant land left down that way. So, it's something we look for. It's something we capitalize on when we can find the opportunities, but we still have, you know, larger demands across the entire system.
I certainly, I can speak well to the Wilmington, the station and the center not having really much of a room to grow. I think there might be some opportunities there, but it'd certainly be pretty limited. I do think that there might be opportunities in the North Wilmington Station area, but I think that that would have to probably be a conversation between the MBTA and some private landowners.
At North Wilmington, the MBTA doesn't have any spaces.
Yeah, yeah, which I imagine that makes it less profitable for you, because I'm, I have a monthly pass, but if I got the daily pass, it's seven fifty per train ride and plus the six bucks to park, and that certainly cuts into, if you're not getting any parking revenue. I was really just seeing if there was any appetite for the MBTA to try and change the opportunities for MBTA either owned or leased parking in the North Wilmington area.
There's one opportunity for us left at the downtown station, and that's, you know, we have that maintenance facility there. That's about the only land that's left around there. So, you know, if we can find a location to move that to, then that could probably create maybe seventy-five or a hundred spaces at max, with additional spaces. So, it's, you know, it's an opportunity, but it requires a movement of the maintenance headquarters, which is a regional headquarters for the whole of the central portion of the north side service.
Okay. Did, I wonder if it's, you indulge me, Chair, if, and again, putting Deputy Chief Kavanaugh and Chief Desmond on the spot, if either of you have any opinions on the matter, and I'm sure we'll have some comments from the public too, but I wanted to make sure that both of your departments were given an opportunity to be heard.
So, from our meetings with the MBTA and the delegation, we have seen an improvement in the conductors moving across the tracks, or if they see us coming, making sure they're waving us through instead of blocking. So, what I can say is that the conversations have been productive. The MBTA has been far more responsive than I guess I thought they would be, and we've gotten a tremendous amount of help from the delegations. At this point, I think what they're trying to do with the stops that we've identified or that they've identified is load a no ridership and making those kind of eliminated through the summer months, which is a slower time for them anyway. I think it's worth a shot to try it out and see, and like they said, in six months, if we need to make an adjustment, we can make an adjustment. There's no reason to disbelieve them if they've done everything they've said they've got to do so far, and the experts, they say we give them a shot.
Yeah, I agree with that as well. I mean, it's all depends on what side of the fence you're sitting on, but from a public safety standpoint, we certainly, you know, want to see that our ability to respond is the thing that's most important to us. And again, we're not taking anything away from the fact that this will inconvenience people, but we support the efforts.
I can just add in just one thing. The trains are still going to, those same trains that today are causing, sometimes causing a problem, those trains are still going to go through there. We're just going to eliminate the stop, you know, so it just won't stop there. So, putting it back on in the fall is just a matter of saying, "Put the time back into the schedule," and then the train can then stop again. So, it's not like the train gets eliminated, it's just that stop. So, it's easy to turn back on again, and, you know, we even suggested that if you wanted to do a trial, we would call it just that, a trial. So, it would be automatically come back in the fall without even being asked for it. We could just put it back on and let you folks tell us, you know, it's okay to leave it off or whatever. So, we can make it easier for it to come back without having to have somebody even ask to have it put back on.
Just a question, and I know we've talked about it when we've met at the State House and on the conference call, about the list of stations that are on the seventeen or fifteen list. Have we made that list yet? Because I know we were pushing to make that list.
Yeah, the list is still being worked on. North Wilmington is on the list of stations. You know, a mini-high, I can, we started to touch on it, just so everybody understands. What you have at downtown Wilmington now, the low-line station, that's a low-level platform with a mini-high. That's what we're trying to get permission for at North Wilmington.
Right.
All right? So, it's not, today, the regulations require full-high-level platforms. So, it's, you know, the platforms have to be four feet above, the entire length of the platform has to be like that.
Like Anderson is.
So, it's, that's the difference between the two station types. The cost of one versus the other is significant.
Can you speak a little bit to the price differential?
Yeah, I mean, it's, every slate is a different price, and we can, probably at this location, you wouldn't have to put a great separated connection to connect the two sides of the platform together. You know, to cure this problem, you need a platform where it is today, but further away from the crossing.
Yeah.
And then you need to cross another platform diagonally across the street and the tracks so that when the train is going inbound, it can go across the crossing before it has to make a station stop. That way there, because when, once the train goes across the crossing, the gates can come up behind it, which opens up the roadway to traffic. So, that's what we're talking about in this instance. It's that type of arrangement. My guess is that it's probably in the ten to twelve million dollar cost to do that. I mean, it's an expensive proposition.
And that's?
It's ramps, and you have to have, you know, all of the canopies, the lighting, all the rest of it, then you have to have emergency escape locations along the platform. So, if a train is in a station that's on fire, you can't get to one of the ramps that you would typically use to enter the station, we have to create new ways to get down off the high-level platform so that you're not stuck on top of a four-foot-high platform, you know, with typically the railings and everything else around it. So, it would be designed specifically for North Wilmington, but it's a big expenditure.
And the smaller option?
Smaller option is significantly less. I guess it's probably in the one and a half to two million dollar range with all the, everything else that has to go with it, but again, you still need canopies, you still need a small or forty-five-foot-high platform, you know, all the lighting and other amenities that have to be there along with that.
Okay. And just to tie that all together, that's what I believe it was Senator Tarn and Representative Robinson had mentioned, that's the option that is currently being pursued, right? With the hopes of getting?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, what we're hoping is that we can not have to put the full nine-carb platform in, that we could have the platform expand as the trains get longer, which is okay, but means we have to still connect the sidewalk at Middlesex Ave up to the platform. So, you don't necessarily have to build a platform, a hallway from the edge of the street, but you have to build a sidewalk to get up there and leave enough room to build a platform if the trains happen to get longer.
Okay.
And John, again, are we on that list, or are we still trying to get on that list?
No, this station is on that list of stations that don't have any kind of accessibility and have a situation where the platforms are really not what they should be, even without having them.
Do you have an idea of when they would address that list of stations?
There's a separate group at the MBTA that's focused right on that, just on that list. They have a whole program that's centered around that. I can try to get an update as well for that to see how it's going.
That'd be great.
It's a comprehensive list. They're not working on any one station at a time. They're working on all of the stations, because when they get, they go to get the permission to actually do what they're proposing, they want to be able to say it's going to take care of all of these stops. You know, for the same price, we could do one station with full-high levels, we could do a whole bunch of stations with a different type of platform in the region.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the President yet? Yes, go ahead.
Yep.
Just name it.
Frank West to Richmond Road. Just, I was at home listening to this, and I just felt compelled to speak, because back in the late nineteen nineties, the MBTA took over a bunch of active businesses without regard to the actual businesses. You know, the businesses were a glass company, they had Wilmington Building and Grain, they had BFW Action Glass, right? So, my comment is to say that if the MBTA was willing to do that at that time, and you're looking for some spots over in North Wilmington, you know, let me back up and say, one former selectman called that section of Wilmington Center Six Guns City, if I'm not mistaken. I think you remember that comment, Mike, you didn't make it, but one of your contemporaries on the board did. Well, North Wilmington, some of that area looks like Six Guns City, and the specific parcel that I'm talking about is the, what got voted down as a detox center. You know, is it possible, you guys are looking at vacant land, there's a vacant piece of land there, it's literally right on the tracks, and you could put in a handicaps platform and all that and have the train stop before the street or after the street, depending on which end of the, which end of the track you're talking about. That might alleviate part of the problem. Again, very expensive, I'm not saying it's cheap, but you could get, A, some parking spots down there, and B, you know, maybe the T could put up some sort of a building rented to a private enterprise that would, A, take the parking fee, and B, have some sort of a train-related enterprise, you know, maybe like a sandwich shop or something along those ends. But again, it was done in Wilmington Center, you took, you know, a bunch of pieces of land, and like I said, it was just that, I don't see why you couldn't do the same thing again if there was budget to allow it.
Thank you. Yes.
If you eliminate, if you don't allow the flag stops, how do we get into Boston? You eliminate the flag stops, there's no way for us to get into Boston on public transportation. It's not zero people that use it. There's no, there aren't a lot of people who do use it during the nine-peat hours. That's the intent of a flag stop. If somebody's there, they're supposed to stop and pick them up. That was the whole intent of the flag stop. Now, what are we going to do in the summer? All our kids go in town during the day. I go in on medical appointments at Mass General. A lot of people go in for their appointments in Boston. There has to be some sort of transportation. To get to Wilmington Center, that parking lot is full at seven-thirty. The only access we have to Boston is North Wilmington, okay? There are ways that you can fix so that the, I don't want to get into the MBTA stuff, but if those trains continually cross the street, and they don't have to, when they come from the north, if they have the people up where the engine is, come all the way up, they can stop before they cross the street, and there are electronic ways that they can control those gates, because they do it in Ipswich. And Ipswich, the train comes, it stops, and the gates are still up, and the cars are going across. When they want to go ahead, they have a little code, which they know what it is, and they'll code it in, and then the gates go back down and they cross. So, there's no need to eliminate, you should not eliminate those, because there are people who use it, and it comes summer, the kids will be going into the ballgame, they want to go in and mess around in this, in town. It has to be left the way it is. I don't understand why you're going to put the zero thing. I don't know when you did this survey, it might have been during the night, but there are people who use that, not all the time, but pretty frequently. It's your great access for Mass General Hospital and for Boston itself. So, you tell me how long I get into Boston by public transportation by you eliminating those flag stops.
Thank you. Did you get the, you have his name, because you're, yeah, okay.
Good evening. Kevin McDonald. First, I want to thank our legislative delegation for being here tonight. The previous meeting arose to offer some solutions to some various issues. This happens to be one of them. What I'm holding in my hand is actually a train schedule that I got from the manager's office. So, the town officials, they actually know when each stop is, each scheduled stop, and we have plenty of people on the police department that could actually put a vehicle on the other side of that road. I see Wilmington police officers out on Route ninety-three, and in my opinion, that's the job of the state police. So, if we're having officers out there doing something that they don't need to be doing, they should be able to be at the station. What I proposed is very simple, and I took the train the other day, because my mechanic is in Lawrence. What I did was I drove my car to Lawrence, he dropped me off at the Lawrence train station, I got on the train, I spoke to the conductor, and I told him about the situation in Wilmington. I told him the train doesn't have to block Route sixty-two. All it simply has to do is designate a section of the first car for the North Wilmington passengers to get off of there, and that's exactly what happened. I got off at that first car, didn't have to block the road, everything went smooth. With regard to handicap accessibility, if you can picture this in your mind, Logan Airport as mobile vehicles that pull up the planes, and they can take passengers, they can have a scissor lift or something like that that brings handicapped people down. If you've ever been to the East Boston intersection, there's a public safety official that works an electronic device to control the lights, and what he does is he observes the way the traffic is and how heavy it is. And what he does is he controls those lights so the traffic flows very properly and very efficiently. The gentleman here who mentioned about the Ipswich stop, I haven't seen that stop, but I suspect that a public safety official could control those arms just like they do at the East Boston stop. And so, what I'm proposing is something very simple. Number one, I'm totally against eliminating stops, and one of the things that came into my mind was the fact that I think the train station might be considered to be a grandfather situation where we have the right to keep that stop and all the stops, and what I suspect could happen if a savvy lawyer gets involved, and somebody that's handicapped or somebody that takes that train gets a lawyer, he could probably bring a lawsuit at keeping us from getting stops back, or saying that because we changed the stops, it's no longer grandfather clause. So, I think it's a simple fix. What I wanted to offer in addition to that is the fact that there's a very unpopular detox facility proposed for that area, and what I've been saying is that area has a very high water table, and there's no And what I've been saying is that area has a very high water table and there's no sewer for that facility. And what I suspect, because these toxic chemicals are going to be concentrated in a septic tank and then released all at once into a leaching system, that these toxic chemicals are going to pollute our groundwater. And I haven't really seen many of the town officials even talk about that.
Kevin, are we talking about the same things here now? We're talking about the train stops?
Yeah. I'm prefacing my, my proposal for the, with this. What I'm proposing to our legislative delegation is the same thing I proposed for that detox site, for our town officials to bring in the proponent of the detox center, who's a developer, and have him negotiate with the town or the state to change his proposal there. And I'd like to see an underground parking facility with a train station with some senior housing, maybe some veterans housing and some handicap housing, get some state funding for the senior housing, some federal funding for our veterans and some other funding for our handicapped folks and MBTA funding for a train station. And I think that would eliminate the threat against our, our water table with all the highly toxic chemicals that are going to be deposited into a septic system. As you know, these, these kids that are dying of these...
Kevin, you're just about wrapping it up, cause I don't know where you're going with the...
You want to finish it for me, Mr. Cower?
No, I want you to finish.
What I, what I'd like to ask you guys is if you'd be willing to take a look at that and see if we can take that, either negotiate with the developer or have the state take it by eminent domain for a train station, for a parking facility, senior housing, veterans housing in a public purpose. That's what I'll have to offer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Hi, Jeff Wood, 18 Frederick Drive. Just to follow up on what Mr. Buckley was saying, are there technology ways to get it done in the short term today? So when the train pulls in, if it's an emergency situation, they'll let the gates go up?
Well, the gates, the gates come down by the approach of the train.
Right.
And they're, they're set based on the speed of the train as it approaches, so they're called constant warning devices. So if a train's going 30 miles an hour, the gates come down.
Right.
So the gates are down at least 20 seconds and probably like 27 seconds before the train arrives at the crossing. It's going faster, it just starts the gates that much quicker, so they always have the same amount of warning time.
Right.
In this case here, it's, the warning time is part of the problem, the rest of it is the train itself actually blocking the crossing. So when the train is stopped, it's actually physically across the roadway. So the gates up or down doesn't cure the problem, it's, it's the, the fact that the train is there as well.
Okay. So you, I, I was understanding from tonight's discussion that those trains are blocking the road, are coming out from Boston?
No, going out from Boston, they go out, they go all the way across the tracks, obviously across Middlesex Ave and then they stop at the platform. So the gates come up behind the train.
Okay.
Because when the train is coming the other way, then when they stop at the platform, the train is stretched out across the roadway.
Okay.
So it doesn't have to be.
Right. So as Mr. McDonald was just saying, that he asked the guy to just stop there and he was able to do that. So I'm just saying, is no technology that's available to the MBTA to allow an emergency situation where that, where that engineer can raise the gates for an emergency vehicle? We, we don't have anything like that on the, on the MBTA. Now, I think somebody mentioned about Ipswich, right? At Tops Hill Road and Ipswich, there's a, there's a setup on the platform where the train actually stops, no matter which direction it's going, the train always stops clear of the crossing. And that, in that case there, the, the engineer can trigger the gates to go up. So the gates typically don't go any, in either direction. But an inbound move here, the train's going across the, the roadway, so the gates have to come down.
Can that stop before it goes across the road?
Well, that, that's what we're trying to say, that, that, when a, when an engineer is operating from a control tower, which would be the, the locomotive end of the other end of the train.
Yeah, I understand that.
So go inbound, there's not supposed to be anybody in that coach if it's a midday train. There's not supposed to be anybody there. That coach is the only one that would line up with the platform at, at North Wilmington.
Can't the people get on there and walk back like they do on the, on the outbound? It creates another safety issue.
Yeah. And if people walk between trains of movement, I mean, there are, there are ways to do it.
Well, that aren't a...
To, to continue, the, the safety issue that's created is that it sets a trap and it tempts drivers, the reason we do this, it tempts drivers to cross for the train with the gates down, okay? You, you would think that most people would be smarter to get the train stopped and, and they don't, they'll run away through the gates. So that, when we come into a station stop on the inbound train, we intentionally block the crossing to protect both the train, the passengers and the driving public.
They all do that at Wilmington Center.
It's a simple fix having a public safety police officer down there to keep people from going through those gates. It's very simple, it's not too complicated.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak in the public? Okay. Just a quick question, so when, when does the decision need to be made about, how quickly do you need to know?
Well, the schedules are now on, on a, on a, schedules are scheduled to be revised and reprinted for a May 20th rule.
Okay.
So, you know, we need, we would need to know a couple of weeks before that on what the decision was from the town.
Probably send the printer for proofing the week of April 22nd, so.
So you need to know before, so you need to know before the 22nd of April?
If you needed more time, we could hold off just printing the, the April line schedules for another week, maybe. So we, it's not a hot, fast date, but you know, if we know you need more time, we can, we can work with you.
It's a relatively minor change as far as the printer's concerned. We're not changing any other station stops or any other station times.
We just basically have to delete the times that already knows where the F stops are now, so.
Just one point question.
Yes.
Just tell me how long I get into Boston during this time? Simple question. Can anybody tell me that off the top of their head?
We're not, we're not stopping anything. We're not stopping anything right now.
Not yet.
Well...
I mean, what you do...
It may not happen, it may not happen.
Should not happen. I'd go to the hospital.
All right. So you need, so you need for us to make that decision before the 22nd. Okay? So this would be the meeting?
So the next meeting of the board, next scheduled meeting is April 22nd, so.
We, we could wait till after that meeting.
Okay.
The fall of the day should be sufficient.
Okay. All right. Yes. Did anybody have a question?
Just a request, I think for our legislative delegation, that again, I appreciate you being here, but please continue doing what you can to try and get the far less expensive option because I, I, I don't want to spend money where we don't need to, but I want to make sure that the residents and, residents and businesses in the North Wilmington area still have that option to use it. And I, I do the same to the gentleman from the MBTA. I thank you for being here as well.
Mr. Chairman, I would just reiterate that we don't perceive any kind of a short-term decision that we might make as a substitute for the long-term action and we remain committed to that and we remain committed to working with the MBTA to try to create the right situation for the development we need at North Wilmington.
Yes.
If I could just make sure that we follow up on the question that I had, even though I'm afraid I might know the answer, even if it's just for a trial six-month, three-month basis, if there would be a reduction in cost if we wouldn't give up.
Do assessments change if train service is scaled back?
Thank you.
Okay. I want to thank you for the discussion, thank you for coming and we'll put this on the agenda for a vote as to what will take place on the 22nd of April for this. And hopefully we'll get the answer back on the assessment and some other answers. Thank you.
Any other questions about the legislatures? Actually, you got a whole lot to roll quickly, so.
Right. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's put it on the April 22nd. Right. Okay, we have a 7:40 appointment, we're running a little late, it's eight o'clock, with Maureen Hickey, who's the executive director of the Wilmington Housing Authority regarding senior housing.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thanks for having me.
Thanks for coming.
Do you want me to just start like with the questions that Jeff sent me?
So just by way of introducing the topic, there's certainly been a lot of discussion recently about senior affordable housing, senior subsidized housing. And so I, I know that we've had some conversations, Maureen and Valerie and myself, about the challenges that the Housing Authority faces in terms of just maintaining what they have in the way of housing, let alone the prospect of additional housing. But I thought it would be a timely topic to bring up for the board and the public to hear about in terms of some of the challenges you're facing and any opportunities that may exist for additional funding.
Jeff sent me a list of questions, so I'm just going to run through, the top six were easy, the, the bottom six not so much. Just to give everybody an idea, the Wilmington Housing Authority was incorporated in 1950 and we opened our first development in Demingway in 1952, which is elderly housing, the front 40, if anyone's familiar with our buildings. And then in 1987, we were able to open a building in Demingway in the back, the extension, we added another 29 units, plus we added our 13 houses. We have 13 single-family homes scattered around Wilmington. It's called a Chapter 705 Family Scattered Site Housing and those are all the units that we have. We have 82 units in total, we also have 11 Section 8 vouchers, which is a very small program for Section 8. So all the units at Demingway are all one bedrooms and we also have a congregate unit at Demingway, which is rented by New Path and they keep disabled folks in there, it's a four-bedroom. And all our family units, like I said, are all three bedrooms. These, this is all state public housing, which is overseen by the Department of Housing and Community Development, a state agency. They set all the regulations and guidelines about how we do everything, how we manage our waiting lists, what we charge for rent. In the elderly developments, we charge 30% of your income for rent in the front and 25% in the back, just has to do with heat. And the family developments all pay 27% of their income for rent. The Housing Authority does not get a subsidy from the state or the Department of Housing and Community Development to run our operation. We're supposed to operate using the funds that we receive for rents. The state does subsidize some housing authorities, but we don't fall into that category. We do get funds from the state, capital improvement funds. They started the capital improvement plan about 10 years ago, which was great, it was well-needed. And so far, we've, we've, I think we have about $1.3 million in the last 10 years in capital improvements and different projects. It's spread out though, through all the elderly developments and the family units. We get about $110,000 a year, which goes very quickly when you're using state procurement laws and you have to go out to bid for everything, use prevailing wage rates. It's kind of a complicated process, as I'm sure everybody in the town of Wilmington knows. So that's how we go about that. Our units, I think, are in, in pretty good condition. We do what we can to keep them viable so that we can rent them, so that they're safe. They're not perfect, by no means, but we work with our tenants and I have a wonderful maintenance person over in Wilmington, he works really hard. We only have one maintenance man for all the property. So he's supposed to do the grounds, take care of the units, fix everything, change light bulbs, take the trash out, clean the bathrooms, plow the snow, shovel the snow, I mean, you name it, it falls under her, his wheelhouse. So he's a great guy, he's a very busy guy. And I think we do pretty well. I mean, we could always do better, we could always use more funding, everybody can use more funding. We try to spread the money around that we get from the state every year to, we've done a few of our houses over in the last few years, we've done some improvements to Demingway. We've gotten some special projects from the state when they have them available. They don't always do that kind of thing, but when they do and we can take advantage of it, we will do that. I was asked to talk about the veterans. So over at Demingway right now, I did count before I left, we have 30 residents, so that's probably a little less than half, have got in using a veterans preference. That is either the person is the veteran or they're the spouse of a veteran. And that also numbers about half. So we do house quite a few veterans over at Demingway. I don't think we have any veterans in our family units right now, which they would also get a preference. So that leads me to talk about the waiting list. The state issues guidelines, regulations, the, the waiting list is, is, is what it is and we follow the regulations very strictly. You fill out an application, you send it into the Housing Authority. Most folks are a seven or a standard applicant, you're not having any kind of emergency, you would go on the waiting list as a standard applicant. We give a preference if you're local from the town of Wilmington or you work in the town of Wilmington, so you would also get a preference on the waiting list, which would help. We also give a preference to veterans. So a local veteran would get in pretty quickly, probably six to 12 months. We probably could house a local veteran, depending on turnover. And then a regular local person though would come, probably, they're probably waiting like two to four years right now to get into Demingway, which is kind of a long time. Veterans get a preference anywhere in the country. So a veteran from Florida can apply to Wilmington Housing Authority tomorrow, they would get that preference and they would actually come before a local person, not a local veteran. So it would be local veterans, all other veterans, then local people. So right now, the waiting list, I guess across the state, there's about 160,000 people on the state waiting list, waiting for housing. Wilmington is not alone in the need for more housing. It's just the way it is, it's really, I've been in Wilmington Housing Authority for about nine years now and so the waits, the waits have increased, probably doubled for folks to get in. So I always say to anybody who's listening or thinking about applying to Demingway, that you should do so. The sooner the better. If you came to the top of the list and you weren't ready, I think you could say no to us or we could try to work something out. So that's about the waiting list. Anybody have any questions about the waiting list or how that might work? No?
Maureen. Yes.
Thank you. Hi, Maureen. Welcome back. Nice to see you again. Mr. DePristo, good evening. Just so folks know, when you talk about applying, you can apply online or stop by the office, right? So if folks want to stop in and get an application, you can certainly have worked through that with people before, so they can get ahold of it there, right?
Right. We do have a website, www.wilmingtonha.org and the application is on our website, you can call our office, you can, we'll mail you one. The state has just revamped the whole waiting list system and it's all online. Probably in about two weeks, you're going to be able to just log in and apply yourself online. You still can't do that, you still have to give us the, the piece of paper, but in a few weeks, that will be rolling out and we'll see how that goes. But we have a computer now in our community room and the idea to have that was for folks, if they want to come in, and we can maybe help them do that process or we can hand them the paper application.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to say Executive Hickley, I think you do a great job. Anytime I call, you always answer the phone. If I had to come see you, you always had the great answers and I think you do an outstanding job and you're a great individual, too. I'm just curious, how many, and I, I pretty much know, but to the general public, how many units are there? And you said what, about half Wilmington residents?
No veterans.
I'm just curious.
Half are veterans.
Half the veterans.
Most are probably Wilmington residents. So we have 69 apartments at Demingway, 69.
All right. You know, I just really don't have any questions, I just want to give you a great compliment. I think the residents that live there have a great director running the show and they do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. We do our best. I was also asked about the, the net income limits and the state actually just issued new income limits that we adopted last month at our board meeting. So a one, one-person family that wanted to apply to Demingway has to earn less than $56,600. If there were two people in that household, it's $64,900. The income limits are pretty, pretty high, I think. You know, they allow a lot of the middle-class folks to get under there, especially when you're paying a lot of out-of-pocket medical expenses, we can usually get folks there. And we have those posted on our website, too, the income limits. Let's see. So I talked about the, I'll talk a little bit about the priorities on the waiting list because I did talk about the preferences, the veterans and the local, but the priorities, most people that walk in the door are going to be a standard applicant, which is a seven, but it actually goes one through seven. One, two, and three are like a natural disaster, an earthquake or, or some kind of event like that, or that the, the land was... that, or that the land was developed and they had to move out, or urban renewal, things like that. Four is the most common emergency priority, and the things that fall into that are victims of domestic violence, someone having a medical emergency, someone just becoming homeless through no fault of their own. And so there's questions on the application about that, and you just fill them out, and that is how you'll get put on the list. So when you apply, we just put you in the system, however you documented it in your application. And then when we call you, when you get to the top of the list, we call you and to screen you, we'll ask for more documentation to back up everything that you claimed in your original application. That's about it. And then I was asked about, are there any bills or anything from the state as far as building more public housing? I know that they talked about it, they had a legislative day last February, I mean, this past February, and they did talk about a bill. And they're always talking about trying to build more housing or find more funds. We just haven't seen it in a long time. The state built a lot of units in the '50s, and then again in the late '70s and the '80s, and there really hasn't been a bump up since then. Some towns, they form nonprofits, they're able to do something in their communities and maybe add a few more units here and there for veterans, or we just haven't been able to do that yet. I did look into that today. There are a lot of places to get grants. It's a real specialty. My specialty is in state public housing, not necessarily development. But there are funds out there. I looked, the town of Chelmsford, they've seemed to do a lot of development in the last ten years or so, but a lot of it was community preservation funds, which I know Wilmington doesn't have. So that's a big thing that some of the communities use to kind of get there, or even get started. It seems like there's a combination of funds that come from everywhere when people do development, you know, mass housing, DHCD, the Housing Authority, the town, private developers. It's really quite complicated. I do think we should probably, though, spend some more time with Valerie looking into it, because we need more housing in this town, that's for sure.
Thank you. Thank you. And we have, we've had several talks with Valerie over the past year, year and a half, and it is not an easy fix, that's for sure.
It isn't. It's very complicated, unfortunately. It shouldn't be, but...
Joe?
I did have one question, but you did a very good job, Ms. Hickie, in explaining kind of what we could do to try and increase the number of units that the Housing Authority has. And I do want to thank both of you and Mr. DePisquali for being here, because I know it's a complicated issue to try and solve, but the fact that there's a waiting list certainly shows that there's a demand for it, and you folks do a fantastic job providing an affordable way for people to stay in town, and for veterans to stay in town as well. And I certainly hope that perhaps we can start putting together a plan to maybe seek some of the, what seems like multifaceted funding to try and get that perfect storm to happen, so that we can increase our affordable housing inventory. So just thank you for helping explain that, because that was helpful for me, and I'm sure folks watching at home. But thank you for being here and for what you folks do.
You're welcome.
Okay. Yes.
Just one more question, if I could. First of all, I recognize the challenges that you face, obviously, from the time that I spent with you, and certainly learned a lot from you when I was there volunteering. But I remember when we were trying to just simply get a furnace at one point, how long it took to just get the funding to do that, because the budget was so tight. And so I recognize the challenges you face, and I'm grateful to you and the members of the Board that volunteer over there. I wonder, I know you spend some time in North Reading working for them as well. Is there something that we could do better? You see, that you might say to Wilmington that you see in other communities, or North Reading, or any other community, to say that we could do better to help?
I think North Reading's in the same boat that Wilmington is. I hear a lot from their town administrator and some of the Board members, because they want to develop more housing, too. Is Wilmington, is that the ten percent?
It is right now.
In the subsidized inventory? We are at the ten percent. North Reading is not, so they're not, they're battling with 40B developments. And if I can just touch on that, too, a lot of people with the 40B developments, it's affordable, it's not the same as what we do at the Housing Authority. State public housing is much more, you know, affordable. Those rates are set by the state. Those are still a little high. They're less than market-rate rents. It's still a good program for some folks, but it's just certainly not the same as what we do. But North Reading is really struggling the same as Wilmington is. I mean, our waiting list is the same, and they're really trying to figure out what they can do. They actually, a few years ago, tried to do something using some federal funds, and it ended up falling through. They weren't able to get it all together. Again, there's just so many pieces to get together, that it just didn't happen.
And I'm assuming there's no vacancies at this point?
Oh, we always, I mean, we have a vacancy. You know, we have one at Demingway, we have one family vacancy, but we're already screening people to fill those.
How long does that process take, in screening people to fill the...
Well, it's just got longer with the new statewide waiting list system that we're trying to figure out. Usually, we screen people about thirty days. Usually, when we have a vacancy, we call on the top few people on the list. They have to provide us all the documentation to prove that they're eligible, you know, financially, their age, eligible, whatever else that we need to look at. We run a criminal record check, we do some references, landlord references, personal references, things like that. So we usually try to, at the most, keep our units only, we try thirty days. If we can do thirty days, that's great. The state kind of doesn't want us to do any more than sixty days. We have an online reporting system, so we get dinged if we do more than sixty days. But with one maintenance man, and depending on what else is going on, we do a pretty good job of getting them all rented within like thirty to sixty days. A family unit might take a little longer, they're single-family homes, they take some time to paint, and to just go through and, you know, fix up regular wear and tear kinds of things, but we do pretty well. And we use the house correction in Belrika, we use the inmates a lot to paint and do yard work, so that's a big help for us, too.
Right. Thank you. Anybody else on the Board?
No.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, you're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Do you have two questions?
On to Communications.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So under Communications, the first item is just a press release from EPA that is notifying the Board and the town about this list, that the Olin site has been placed on, this priority list of sorts, where the intent is to really try to move the process along, so to speak, in terms of reaching the options for remediation. The way it's been described to me is that the expectation is by the fall that EPA will, working with Olin, have a series of alternatives for remediation of the onsite contaminants and the DAPL, with EPA offering their recommended alternative, and then it would be open for public comment, and the goal is to have the remediation solution, if you will, or solutions determined by the end of the calendar year.
That's good news. I believe Congressman Moulton also put out a press release as well to say that his office worked closely with the business community to make this happen. And that's a big plus for us, to get this moved on the emphasis list, and the idea was listed in the Moulton press release with the business community, to get it cleaned up for redevelopment. That's good.
Just briefly on that, Mr. Chair, so I'm certainly glad that the site was put on the Administrator's Emphasis List, which means that, I mean, we've been waiting an awful long time to know what the plan is gonna be. Because we don't yet know what that plan is gonna be, it hasn't been decided yet, we're left with a, really, just the one paragraph in a press release that perhaps I'm overanalyzing, but, you know, the goal is expediting the selection of a remedy to remediate soil, surface water, and areas of highest groundwater contamination. I'm stricken by the use of the word "highest" for groundwater contamination. To me, that means it doesn't seem like, right now, and again, I'm certainly at the risk of overanalyzing a press release, but it certainly doesn't say complete remediation, which I found a little bit disappointing. And it's followed up with, the EPA also hopes to work cooperatively with developers and local officials regarding potential reuse plans for the property, which, again, it certainly seems like the EPA is already looking towards what's next for the property. I want to, I don't think we're there yet. I think we need to know what the cleanup is gonna be before...
Yeah, I agree. I don't think we're there yet, either. I'd want to see the facility cleaned up, and I think we should have Mr. DiLorenzo come in from the EPA and have a discussion and explain to us what this actually means. And from what I understand, it's a good thing.
Yeah, yeah. It's certainly better than it could have been, but I remain skeptical. So I'd love to be proven wrong, and I hope that it's a very thorough cleanup plan, but...
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So through you, if we could have the manager, if you would be so kind, could we reach, could we write to the EPA and then thank them for this being placed on the priority list and invite them in, obviously, as was just previously mentioned, Mr. DiLorenzo, but also, you know, to have Dan Deutsch here, and we could ask questions about, what does it mean to be on this priority list now? You know, what does that mean in terms of timetable? What could we expect? Those type of questions, and perhaps engage them in conversation.
During the course of the, prior to the press release, I was contacted by representatives from EPA, specifically Lynn Jennings and Kate Melanson, to just give me a heads-up that this was in the works. And one of the things that I had talked about at the time was having them come out, so I would expect it'll be perhaps a May or June meeting at this point, but I will follow up with them.
Thank you.
I would also just note that I think it's good news that there's a level of attention, greater attention, that's being focused on this. I still believe that we need to be mindful through our consultants, as well as through work and their consultant, that we're not sacrificing any level of due diligence, so to speak, in an effort to get to a remediation plan.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to talk upon this, if I could. You know, the site was added to facilities cleanup and redevelopment activities. That's in the press release. It'd always been the position of the town, for as long as I've been on the Board of Selectmen here, to clean up the site first before any development of Olin site, and I hope that is still the position of this Board. I'd like to ask you, Mr. Kira, a question. Back a few months ago, we left executive session to come into public session to talk about GFI. When Mr. Newhouse was coming in, you tapped me on the shoulder and you asked me to, if I could chair the meeting, because you had a conflict, because your brother was going to represent New England Trans-Rail and GFI. Meanwhile, we were in executive...
He wasn't representing New England Trans-Rail, but go ahead.
Well, GFI. The point I want to make is that because your brother is a consultant, meanwhile, we just got out of that room, executive session, we were talking about that. I just want to also say that the executive sessions that we came out of that meeting had to deal with New England Trans-Rail and GFI. Also, we had several executive sessions. You attended every single one of them, relative to Olin, New England Trans-Rail, and GFI. We had Dan Deutsch and Town Council present at some of those meetings, but you never recused yourself from any of those strategy meetings. We were in there talking strategy on how to protect the town, and I say this respectfully. You were in every single of those executive sessions. You don't think there's a conflict between you being in all those meetings, your brother is now representing GFI as a consultant? I just, I bring that to you. I just think that's an issue. I mean, we're talking strategy to protect the community, and you're pretty to everything in there, and now your brother's a consultant, and you had to recuse yourself at that moment. But we had many, many executive sessions. Dan Deutsch was there, our new Town Council, talking about GFI. I just bring that up, Mr. Chair. I think that's an issue.
Okay. Thank you. And I had filled out a 268A, and I believe on that, and I was part of those meetings and discussion, and I protected the interest of the community at those meetings. And I found that I recused myself when it came to the open public meeting. I had nothing, there was nothing in those meetings that were related to me not protecting the interests of the community.
But I'll say this, I know we can't say, Council always said to me, you can't speak verbatim of what takes place in executive session, but you can give generalizations. We absolutely did talk about, we absolutely talked about GFI. I'd just like to ask you, when did you file that 268A?
I don't know, I'll have to...
All right, whatever, I know you wouldn't know, but... All right, I'm just saying, well, I just firmly believe you, in those meetings, we talked strategy, and now your brother is a consultant and the former Town Council. I understand, you know, we voted, I mean, I abstained from allowing Mr. Newhouse to do that, and he has that right to do so, and we heard that. So I just, I bring that up. That's all. All right, very good. Thank you.
All right, next is a memo from Mike Morris, Town Accountant, regarding the status on the Finance Director, Town Accountant interview process. I would note that we did extend the timeline to accept resumes. As was noted early on in the process, there was a study that was done, the Lieutenant Governor was involved in looking at the challenges facing municipalities across the state in terms of hiring certain municipal employees, particularly those in the financial element, and Town Accountants certainly fall into that. We did not receive a significant number of resumes. In fact, ultimately, we received ten resumes, even as we extended the timeline. We did have interviews on April 3rd and 4th, three candidates, and have two candidates that are being recommended for the Board's consideration. Just in terms of the process, the general laws allow for initial interviews to be conducted in executive session, and only at the final stage are the names of the candidates released. Clearly, individuals who are working in another community, you know, they have, they need to be, if they are going on to a finalist stage, given the opportunity to advise their current employers about the prospect that they may be seeking employment elsewhere. So I guess a couple of things I would just point out is, and Mr. Morris reflects this in his memo, there is a timeliness, time sensitivity to this issue. Clearly, he is scheduled to retire at the beginning of July. We would like to have the new person have some period of time to work with him prior to him, his retirement. Also, just given the limited number of qualified candidates in the pool, there are other positions out there, similar positions, and I think it's imperative that the town move on this so that the Board has an opportunity to interview these candidates before they perhaps identify other options. So it would be my suggestion, and certainly Selectman Eaton can speak to this if he chooses, that the Board consider conducting interviews the week of April 16th, either the 16th or the 18th, possibly.
If I could just add, Mr. Chair, so we, you'll recall that not only did our former Assistant Town Manager, DKC, participate in that task force that did identify the challenge that communities are having in finding financial professionals, and then the applications, as they came in, kind of just hit home with that point. We did, we did receive some good applications, and I think, as the memo does reveal, there are two individuals... applications. And I think of, as the memo does reveal, there are two individuals that the Screening Committee, myself, Mr. Hall, Ms. Colburn Dionne, and Mr. Morris were a part of. We are recommending two finalists be interviewed by the full Board of Selectmen. The, we'd also restructured the Town Accountant position a few months back to be Finance Director and Town Accountant. And in the organizational chart, we did make the assessors departments and the treasure collector's office then report to that Finance Director/Town Accountant position. Because of that, I did reach out to, and that was done through the Collin Center, and that was with some input from the treasure collector's office and the assessor's office, and both Pam McKenzie and Karen Rashes. I have a lot of respect for both of those individuals. They're very professional and they run clean departments. But I did reach out to both of them simply because I wanted their feedback in kind of their hopes for this new hire because it would be the person that they would be reporting directly to, although they would still be department heads in their own right. And both of them were very helpful for me. And I would encourage each of you to reach out to them as well for their own feedback and what they're hoping this new individual would bring. I also reached out to Beth Lalomard, who is the new Assistant Finance Director, who's been here for about a month to, to take over for our longtime Assistant Town Accountant, Lorraine Herman. And she was on vacation. She spent about a half hour still with me on the phone, kind of helping me understand, because I'm not an accountant by trade, understand what's coming up for, basically what are, the Finance Director/Town Accountant is going to be coming into. We have been very fortunate, I think, to have both Lorraine Herman and Mike Morris for so long. I think they've done a very good job. But we did just invest a significant amount of money last year to change our enterprise software to Munis. And that is going to be a very significant project to convert from software to Munis for the incoming Finance Director/Town Accountant. And there's also a, some heavy lifting that needs to be done for updating our chart of accounts. These are both very labor-intensive tasks that will need to be done. My hope is that there can be, as much as we can, an overlap between the amount of time that Mike Morris has left, because again, he'll be retiring in early July, and this new Finance Director/Town Accountant, because there is an awful lot of institutional knowledge that will be retiring in early July. He's been here for more than 30 years. And he knows where everything's coming in. He knows how everything's going out. And because there are no internal applicants for this position, I do think that it is imperative that we make sure that this new person is in the best position to succeed. So I would wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Hall's recommendation that we reach out to the two finalists and conduct interviews as soon as we can because I'm very optimistic that both finalists could do a very good job. But I want to make sure that they're, we are putting them in a position to succeed. I think we're benefit, we benefited because our Town Accountant, Mr. Morris, is not frequently in front of the Board of Selectmen, having to answer difficult questions. I think there's more than one litmus test for whether or not we have a good accountant. But I think that's at least one indication that he's done a good job. And I want to make sure that his successor is put in a position where he or she could be just as successful. Thanks.
Next is a memo from me just outlining the issues associated that have been brought up about the potential impacts of the Ledges 40B development in North Woburn. I know there's been some concern expressed on two fronts really, or at least two fronts. One being the prospect of using Old Main Street as a staging area for construction vehicles, the vehicles of those who are participating in the activities there. I would note that there is some construction fencing that has gone up on the site, and vehicles and equipment have been within that what appears to be a staging area. The, I'd have asked engineering to just take a look at the distance between that area and the southern end of the old Main Street area, which is between 16, about 1,600 feet from one point to the other. And it would certainly seem very unlikely that any of the equipment is going to be stored on the Old Main Street area. My suggestion to the Board is that before establishing any kind of no parking restrictions, there are not currently any no parking restrictions along Old Main Street, that the Board determine whether or not there is going to be any impact. I would note that there is currently, on occasion, some parking along Old Main Street by some of the existing businesses in Wilmington. So I think there needs to be a level of mindfulness in terms of unnecessarily impacting the businesses that we do have on Old Main Street. With respect to the, the traffic patterns there, clearly, one of the patterns, or one of the traffic locations that is being looked at for trucking is up north on Main Street to Eames Street, Woburn Street, Lowell Street to 93. And the, that's certainly a possibility. I would note that just in terms of mileage, the distance is greater going that route than it is going out, going south on Main Street to 128. That distance is about a mile and a half. But ultimately, I think the proponents will use one of the other option. Again, you'll recall that there was in the past some discussions about a truck exclusion there. There is a sign that has been there for quite some time. The Board of Selectmen have never formally gone through the process of establishing a truck exclusion. So at this point in time, even in spite of the fact that a sign has existed on and off there for 20-plus years, from an enforcement standpoint, if someone were to be stopped, they couldn't be prohibited specifically for using the trucks to operate in that area. Next is a memo from Jamie McGoldy, the Operations Manager at the DPW, just providing the Board with notice about the vegetation management plan. This is a requested renewal. Due to the increase in roadside vegetation in recent years, mechanical trimming cannot keep up with the growth along the road sides. So he is submitting a five-year draft vegetation plan to the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources. The plan is required to apply EPA-certified herbicides along town right-of-ways. The plan is good from 2020 to 2024. And public comments are, there is an opportunity for public comment through May 24th. And there will be a public hearing on the 23rd of May at 11:00 a.m. here in the Town Hall. And then finally, under Correspondence is Xfinity providing the Board with notice about an increase in one of their programs. Acorn TV will change from $4.99 a month to $5.99 a month.
Okay, Board to Consider.
First item under Board to Consider is the Board to Consider Adding Members to the Economic Development Committee.
Okay. Want to just announce who you have?
We're just entitled to just one person, correct?
Correct.
Is that what we're doing?
Yep.
All right. I don't mind going first. Let me just say a couple of quick things. Number one, the only person who applied for the job on the Intiles Farm was Eddie Loud. And I appointed him. He did an outstanding job. This time, I only received one phone call of interest. And I really believe this person's going to do a fantastic job. Before I say who it is, this individual served on the Mass Plan Advisory Committee, also the Affordable Housing Committee, the Open Space Committee, and the Comprehensive Water Resource Management Plan Committee, which was, which they decided to go out and they were able to go get relative to Olin, they had the Advisory Committee and Geo Insight. That's who they recommended to the town. Also, a member of the Wilmington Citizen Advisory Panel, and also a former member of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen. I'm going to nominate and support Suzanne Sullivan to serve on this committee. I think she'll do an outstanding job. Not only, she was the only one, but it's a great choice. She has a great background and she knows the subject. So Suzanne Sullivan, that's who I'm supporting. And I'm appointing you, so, okay, you don't need a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to nominate Wilmington resident, retired U.S. Army Major Robert Oliveri. Lives on Woburn Street and obviously a great leader. Brings a great leadership background. I think he brings a very unique perspective to this committee. So I nominate Mr. Oliveri.
Thank you. Mr. Eaton?
Oh, yeah. I'll be appointing Carol Boyesford. She's a longtime resident of Wilmington. She's also the Director of Human Resources at Highland Electronics. One of the takeaways that I had from our discussion with former Secretary Ash and Senator Tarr and Representative Gordon, and I believe Candidate Robertson at that point, was that one of the pain points for existing businesses and businesses that are looking to move into the community, some of the frustrations that they, they deal with as they get the proper permit, or knowing who to ask for different questions. It kind of flew a little bit under the radar. But Highland Electronics did announce, it was in November, so, I guess five months ago or so, that they were expanding their corporate headquarters on John Spid Road, John Spid Road in Wilmington from 40,000 square feet by another 60,000 square feet. And I feel like that is, there's certainly the opportunity to kind of discuss some of the pain points that they might have encountered along the way and might be continuing to encounter along the way. And that, Ms. Boyesford herself is a very intelligent and articulate individual. And I have a lot of confidence in her to be a value-add to the Economic Development Committee. And her being a longtime resident as well, I think, kind of balances that resident and business interests pretty well. So I will be appointing Carol Boyesford.
Great. I'm going to be appointing Wilmington resident Dan Gibbons. He's a businessman, an owner of the Benjamin Moore Hardware, right on Route 38 in the, in the Market Basket Plaza. Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
If I could, I don't think we talked about this before, but will the, once we have a newest member of the Board, when we have a full complement of the Board of Selectmen, will that person have a chance to appoint an additional person, or will the committee have already met?
Well, it's really, I guess, at this point, the pleasure of the Board as to when you want the first meeting to be held. There's currently seven members on the committee. Four would make it 11. If, if there's a fifth member, certainly, it's not to say there can't be, but it would just typically have an uneven number. But I don't know that it's necessary. It's up to the Board.
Yeah, I think we can just, we can't decide for somebody who doesn't exist yet.
So I guess to that point, though, is the, is it the pleasure of the Board to, for me to look at dates prior to April 28th? Or is there any, is there any reason to do that at this point, or look to schedule a meeting in May after, after elections? Is there any particular preference?
I would look in May.
May?
Would be my thought.
Okay.
Okay, true.
Next, under Board to Consider is Establishing a Committee to Review Options That Would Provide an Ice Rink For the Town of Wilmington.
Okay, this is something to discuss. We, it's been brought up plenty of times about the rink, and the rink's been sold. And I don't know if you've had an opportunity to talk with the new owners yet.
We've exchanged emails. We may be having a meeting this week.
Oh, that's good. And I thought it'd be a, kind of a healthy discussion if we brought up an idea of establishing a committee to look into the ice rink issue that is facing Wilmington and the youth of Wilmington, that we want to make sure that they have a place to go. And whether it's the figure skating, or the youth hockey, or the high school. And just to talk about maybe establishing a committee so that they can review and look over options that might be out there for us. So...
I would, I like to say that when we do form a committee, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, we, I assume we're going to put somebody on the Board on that. I would really love to serve on that committee if there's no objection from the Board, if and when that time decides to come. That's all.
Yeah, I think that, I'm thinking that you would choose a person from youth hockey, someone from the figure skating, someone, you know, from the athletic department to serve on that committee as well.
Once again, yeah, I totally agree. But if it comes, I mean, we've had, you know, members serve on the Intiles Committee, et cetera. So I'd be very interested to serve with the youth hockey and try to do something for the kids in this town on a hockey rink. They deserve it. They deserve it.
Yeah. Thank you. I would concur. I would urge the manager to perhaps reach out to all the organizations, whether it's youth hockey, you know, obviously the Athletic Director's Office at the high school, and get the ball rolling as soon as possible. And I have no objection certainly to Mr. McCoy representing our Board. I think it'll be great.
So just to be clear, is this a committee that the Board is looking to appoint? Or are you looking for representatives that I would appoint? Or how is it?
My preference is that each of the stakeholders, because I, to be honest, offhand, I don't know how many organizations in town will be directly affected if we were able to, I think, we would all love to have a hockey rink that provided each of those organizations with the ice town that they want. Offhand, I don't know how many of those are. The athletic department, the youth hockey and figure skating. But I, I would have to educate myself on, because I don't want anybody to be excluded. So, I was a bad basketball player, so it's not really my world, man, but...
Yeah, I'd be inclined to have the, you know, so whether it's youth hockey, have someone, you know, designate somebody. You know, they're certainly experts when it comes to that. If the Athletic Director's Office wants to, you know, designate a secretary or Mr. Alberts himself, anyone who is a stakeholder in that, you know, to Mr. Eaton's point, I'm one of the only people that grew up in Wilmington that can't skate. So I'm not the person to ask about it certainly. But we recognize how important this is. And we want to have all the important stakeholders there.
Right. I have my Bobby Orr rally hockey skates. I want to let everybody know that.
I'd certainly recommend, as you point out, represented from the schools, youth hockey, the skating group. I think it's also going to be important to have represented from the town in terms of whether it's the new Finance Director or, because finances are going to be a major element of any, any plan that were to go forward. Okay.
Thank you.
Board to Consider, the request of...
Mr. Hall, sorry to interrupt you. But your, is your goal to try to formulate that before our next meeting? Or when could people expect to get that ball rolling?
So I'll reach out to the various groups, the schools, youth hockey, the skating club, prior to the next meeting. So it sounds like there are, is my understanding that each Board member is going to be appointing someone as well? Or just, just to be clear here, how we...
I don't have a problem with the mandatory geno to, you know, certain individuals, you know, but what do you want to do?
I hope you want to handle it. I just, you know, wanted to make sure this was on the agenda to discuss.
Why don't I come back with a slate of recommended individuals and then for the meeting on the 22nd? And then if that's acceptable, we can go from there. Otherwise, if... Otherwise, if the board wishes to make ads, then you can do that.
Okay.
Request of Scott Grant, Chairman of the Fourth of July Committee, to use the Town Common Municipal Parking Lot, Swain Green, for the annual Fun on the Fourth Celebration, running from July 3rd through Sunday, July 7th. And further, that the board restrict Hawk and Pedal and transient vendors from conducting business within a half mile of the Town Common during the celebration.
Move to grant the request.
Motion by Mr. Bendel, second by Ms. Eaton. Any discussion? All in favor? You announce.
Next is the recommendation, this was, I would say, probably one of former Chief Mike Begonis's final recommendations, but seeking to have a National Night Out, the Police Department respectfully requests permission to utilize Rotary Park on August 6, 2019. For the purpose of conducting National Night Out Celebration, we also request permission to display banners advertising the event on Town Common a few weeks in advance of the event. The introduction of the National Night Out, America's Night Out Against Crime in 1984, began the effort to promote involvement in community prevention activities, police community partnerships, neighborhood camaraderie, and send a message to criminals, letting them know that the neighborhoods are organized and fighting back. The National Association of Town Watches National Night Out Program culminates annually on the first Tuesday of August. National Night Out now involves over thirty-eight million neighbors in over sixteen thousand communities from the fifty states, territories, and Canada. So the date would be August 6th, and the start time would be 5:30, wrapping up around 8:30.
Is there a motion?
Move to grant the request.
A Mr. Bendel, second. A Ms. McCoy, any discussion? All in favor? You announce.
This next request is from High School Principal Linda Peters, on behalf of one of the students at the high school. And this, I'll just read into the record, the email I received. To whom it may concern, Martin Cox has lived in Wilmington for many years. Martin is an avid military memorabilia collector and has in his possession many World War II vehicles. Last year, Martin offered to bring a few vehicles to display to students in the student parking lot so that students could view them. I helped Martin bring two vehicles from his collection, and many students were brought out to see them. This year, he has offered to bring three of his vehicles, his half-track scout car and his command car. This allows students to observe history firsthand. He not only allows students to look and ask questions about said vehicles, said cars, but he allows them to get in them and crawl, crawl around in them and really get a firsthand account of history. Mr. Jones, my teacher, has supported me and my love for history. I would like to thank him by offering to do this for him and his students. Thank you for the opportunity, Dennis Rooney. And so this, the date on this is.
April 11.
April 11th, so it's coming, coming right up. Nine to 11.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll move to grant the request.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bendel, second by Ms. Eaton. Any discussion? All in favor?
Next on the agenda is approval of the renewal of a second-hand dealer's license for Robert P. Flaherty Jewelers, Inc. And the police chief, fire chief, building inspector, and tax collector have indicated they have no concerns, no issues.
Motion to grant the request.
I'd make a motion, we, we grant the request. I just want to say the guy's been on a long time. He runs a great business. He's a class act, and I know my wife's been very happy, so I make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. McCoy, second by Mr. Bendel. Any discussion? All in favor? It's your news.
Then finally, under Board to Consider, is a request to renew the second-hand dealer license for GameStop. Again, the police, fire chief, building inspector, and collector have no concerns, no issues regarding this application.
Motion by Ms. Eaton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bendel. Any discussion? All in favor? You announce. That's it for Board to Consider. Onto public comments. Okay, we're going to take up public comments. Just a reminder that it's not a question and answer, but you can ask a question if it's not on the agenda. The board members don't have to respond. They can take the question down and respond at the next meeting. If they choose to respond, it's up to them. Okay, we have public comments, yes.
I just wanted to touch real quick on the Olin issue, and I just want to say, Jonathan, I appreciate that you picked up on some of the language. And I don't think the community should be patting ourselves on the back at this point, because I feel it's a little uncertain. I'm really glad that there's some movement on the Olin side after, you know, what, twelve-plus years of no action, basically. So I'm happy about that, but I feel like it's a little bit uncertain. I think the town really has to do its due diligence to make sure that we get the best possible outcome. Whenever I hear expediated, it worries me, especially when I also hear development tied to it. It's an interim action is what the EPA is looking for, because they haven't been able to get Olin to do anything other than interim. So they, they haven't even been able to get an interim action. So this is like an interim action. This isn't the, the, the big kahuna, if you want to call it that. This is just bringing it down to a certain level, trying to bring contamination down to a certain level. And that's a little bit of a concern for us. I just want to say, work's position is the same that it's always been, that we don't want to see any development until we get a record of decision for remediation from the EPA. Often times, the remediation and the development go hand in hand. You can do the two things together, which is fine, because the ultimate thing is to try to get a development on that property. I would also go further to say, I do believe, especially after hearing tonight, that Mr. Kyra, you should not be participating at all in any of these discussions. If you have a conflict of interest, you're supposed to get up and walk away from the discussion. Jonathan, to his credit, did it every time he came up involved in DVA, and you should be doing the same thing, because you have conflict. Because the remediation and the development, the two, two are the same at this point. The other thing I would ask, ask is when you say, Mr. Kyra, that the business community, I think the business community, because they pushed this forward, I would like to have some information. Can you provide information on that?
I was just reading the press release from Congressman Moulton, who stated that.
And that's all it is? It's in the press release?
Yes.
Because it seemed like you knew something about her, or was, you were happy about her or something.
No.
Because I'm pretty sure that the citizens of this town have been working really hard with the EPA to try to get something done. And if the business community is working behind the scenes, I'd kind of like to know about it. I mean, not that it would be a bad thing, but I'd like to know what businesses that work would be.
I don't know. I mean, I could call up Congressman Moulton's office and ask them what businesses that he worked with to do that. I have no idea.
I see.
I'm just, read the release as everybody else did.
Okay, that's fine. But I would suggest that you not participate in any of these discussions, because there's an appearance of a conflict, because your brother was involved in the development. So there's a little bit, you know, that's called transparency, and the ethics laws specifically address that.
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening. Kevin McDonald, have a few comments on a couple of different issues. This past week, I've had two extensive conversations on the phone with Olin's Executive Vice President in charge of environmental safety. And I just want to share a few things about that situation. The representative from Olin stated that the property is under agreement. It was under agreement with Transrail, but it's, the rights, it's, have been assigned from that purchase and sales agreement to an LLC named Wuman Wilmington LLC. And I asked him when that purchase and sales agreement expires, and the purchase and sales agreement has no expiration date. They're, they're under a consent order from the government, and they have to comply with that. My concern is Wilmington has been the community that's been violated. I can't speak to how many people have gotten cancer from the cancer-causing compounds that were in our wells before they were shut down. However, it is a legitimate concern. And we have really received nothing from Olin in terms of compensation for our damages other than water being paid from the MBTA and a water line. And so, Mr. Kyra, I realize that you may be in a conflict of interest with your brother being part of a consultant team for the development. And you set the agenda for the Board of Selectmen. And so what disturbs me is, we've never seen agenda items set that specifically talk about legal action to receive compensation for the damages that Wilmington has suffered. I would like to see our town attorney come in here. I'd like to see a public hearing. I'd like to see a notice go out to the people of Wilmington, especially notifying the people of Wilmington who've been affected with cancer deaths in their family. I know that my fam, my mom died of cancer, and it's a very heartbreaking thing to see a family member die of cancer. And it's disturbing to see that the town of Wilmington has not taken considerable legal action. I propose that the site be deemed a crime scene. And I think that, I think it's a legitimate concern that it be a possible manslaughter situation, where there's documented evidence, where people dumped chemicals into lagoons that got into our wellfields. So a simple question is, would you be willing to recuse yourself from the chairman's position, seeing you may have a conflict of interest, and letting one of the other selectmen take over to set the agenda, to have an agenda item for our town council to come in, to have a public hearing, to have a notice go out, so that we can have the public come in here, offer input, have our town council give us some type of advice as to what our legal rights are to pursue a possible crime scene designation for this property and get some damages for the town? Would you be willing?
I know that you've brought up that in the past several, for several years, about designating it as a crime scene. We can certainly talk to town council about that and, and get some direction from them.
Okay, what I'm asking you, would you be willing to recuse yourself?
I would talk to town council and get direction from them.
See, just to be clear, I mean, at least since my involvement in, in prior to my, me being on this board, but we've, the town has been working very closely with town council with everything related to Olin. It's not, my understanding, this board does not have the authority to declare any parcel a crime scene. That would be within the jurisdiction of the police department, not the Board of Selectmen. It's a completely apolitical process. We can't just say that a parcel is a crime scene. Crimes are dealt with by the police department.
The district attorney's office.
Yeah. So the, that's beyond the scope of what this board has the authority to do, but I, Mr. McDonald, I'm, I'm trying to answer your question as best I can. This, the town has been working very, very closely with special town council with all matters related to Olin. And I, there, there are certain things that we are certainly going to wish that we had a legal recourse for, that the legal system is probably not going to provide us for, but every avenue for legal recourse that this town can take against the, the entities that are responsible for the pollution, we are continuing to pursue. And a lot of the, I guess, anxiety that I have now, based on the press release, is probably because there's been anxiety that's been building up for years and years and years for trying to figure out what we can do next to fix that property. And it's a press release that says, well, we're going to try and figure out the plan soon. And we're left with a few dozen words that we have to try, that I guess we don't have to, but I've clearly chosen to, to overanalyze, but we need to know what that plan is next, because I think the priority needs to be to try and clean up that property as best we can. And I think all of my colleagues up here have repeated that our pri, our hope is that, that that property is cleaned up first. And then we can talk about the next part then. But our hope is the EPA is not just doing a, a slow or, or partial cleanup, but they're going to be thorough, or going to require a very thorough cleanup. So to your, your question and, and comment about pursuing legal recourse, we're doing what we can to work closely with special town council to do that.
Okay, thank you. Someone else first, before I get back to you? Yes?
I just have a question regarding the appointment to the committee of Ms. Sullivan, which I don't disagree with at all, but the question I have is, Ms. Sullivan is a candidate for selectmen, for the selectman race. If she's elected, does that mean that Mr. McCoy has to rescind her appointment to this committee and that she would be making an appointment herself? So that'd be two additional people that will be coming on board to that committee? So isn't it just wasting time to have her on it right now?
Could I, could I answer that? Mr. DePalma, I totally disagree with you, number one. Number two, we've had a member on the Board of Selectmen chose not to run, or chose not to run and be on the Intile Committee, all right? So it's a two-way street. So I'm just telling you, no, you're wrong. She deserves to be appointed. I resent that remark, number one. She should be on the board. No, no. What you said of the comment about her, no, 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 that, that's out of line.
It's out of line?
Come on.
He asked a fair question.
What did, I asked a fair question?
He asked a fair question.
I have, and I said, I have, I do not, I do not disagree with, with it at all. I just had a question. So you want to become hostile?
No.
That's the trouble with the board.
I'm not.
I, I just have to speak up here. I have no problem. I think she is probably a great candidate. I just, I think that's a fair question. He's just asking you if there is a conflict. He wasn't rude or anything. He was just asking you if it, if she weren't elected, can she serve on that committee as well as being a selectman? That's all he was asking.
No, she's, he said.
No, she didn't make a question.
Yes, she did.
That's all he asked. That is the point, that is all he asked.
He didn't say that. No, he didn't, he didn't say that.
And you were really rude in his big response to him.
How about play it back? He didn't say it that way.
This is why there's civil discourse, because of what you answered, gentlemen.
No, no.
I, I, Mr. Kyra, could you answer that question, please?
Yeah, I, I would agree with you, that, that, that was a legitimate question, and we have not addressed that question as a good one to bring up, actually.
The only thing I have to say is, I said, I have no qualms with Ms. Sullivan. She's a very active person in this community, and I was glad to hear her. But the question I add.
Hold on, no, 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 no. He didn't ask you to rescind the vote. The only, the, the only thing I would say.
I didn't ask you to rescind that.
The only thing I would say is that the board had decided to choose one person to represent the board on the committee. So at this time, the, the board has selected, or Mr. Bendel actually volunteered to be on that committee. Now, if Ms. Sullivan does win, she becomes a member of the Board of Selectmen, I, personally, I don't think that she would be sitting on that committee as a member of the Board of Selectmen, because we're choosing one person on the Board of Selectmen to, to be on there. I may not be on there, Mr. Bendel may not be on there, he may be on there, I may, may not, I may, he may not. We don't know that until the 27th, and then, once that's decided, I think that we'd revisit that and, and make that decision.
Particularly if you think of something.
I mean, that's, you know, that's, that's just, it's a, it was a legitimate question. I, I thank you for bringing that up.
Can I just say something, Mr. Chairman? I just want to say something, Mr. DePalma. If she does win the election, we've had two sitting members on a committee, Sel, Kyra, Sel, former Sel, O'Connell, so what is the problem with her being elected and still serving on the committee?
I was asking a question, that's all I was.
That's, what is the problem? What is the problem? No, no, no.
Now, there may not be a problem with that, but, but what I'm saying is, is that the way we structured it was that there would only be one member of the Board of Selectmen. Now, if a, a new board is established, and that board wants to change it and say, we're going to have two, that's fine. I mean, what's the big deal? We want to do the right thing.
I, I interpreted the question from Mr. DePalma to be a question of clarification.
Yeah.
There's several different balls up in the air that we don't know where they're going to land after April 27th. I suggest we assess after April 27th.
That's, yeah.
I don't, I don't, I didn't take Mr. DePalma's comment to be insulting toward either Ms. Sullivan or to you, Mr. McCoy. or to you, Mr. McCoy.
I didn't say insulting, just the way you asked it, that's all. And I commented.
Yeah, I think it's certainly a fair question. Fair question. I think it's just in line with the question I asked earlier about the new member having a seat. So, again, back to your point, it's obviously a fair question. Perhaps it's taken up by the full complement of the board come early May.
Yes, Ms. Sullivan, you had your hand up.
I just wanted to address a couple of things that Mr. Eaton said, maybe just to make you aware a little bit. Olmen is always trying not to clean up. And they don't-- their position is they shouldn't really have to clean up the pollution in the after, okay? The DEP will actually, at some point, most likely, especially if they don't clean up, and even if they do clean up, they can't clean up to a certain level, because that has not been determined yet, that the DEP will actually go after Olmen, if you will, for resource damage. And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts would damage in that resource. And the DEP and the state will seek damages from Olmen for damaging that resource. So, the question is, is this town going to seek damages to that resource? Now, we got-- we haven't been fairly compensated for the damage to that resource. And I think what-- I think what Mr. McDonald, to his credit, what he was trying to-- like the point he was trying to get across was that we have not sought damages to that resource. And are we going to? We could do it now. And there could be negotiations now with Olmen to say, you know, "Well, this is what we would like to see on that property as a redevelopment. We're going to sue you for damages to the resource, because you've damaged our town, and we want to have better negotiations about what's going to happen to that property." This town could take more proactive actions against Olmen. We have not. We've just put it on, you know, drive the whole time, on autopilot for a long time. And I think that, you know, that needs to change. So, I just want to make that clear, that the DEP is going to be going after Olmen for damage to that resource. We should be doing the same. We can do it. You know? I mean, if the state can do it, why can't the town do it? We've lost that resource.
To your-- just briefly to your point, I apologize for interrupting Mr. Hall, but we are-- nothing goes on that I'm aware of, certainly, with regards to that property that is not done through special town council. So, we are-- have been working very closely with Attorney Deutsch for a long time, so that he is advocating on the town's behalf and advising us as to what steps that we can take. So, we're-- we have done the best that we can to make sure that he is constantly answering our questions about the different avenues that we can pursue to-- and as you said, it-- we're never going to be made whole for the damage that's been done. But to get as close as we possibly can to that, because the pollution certainly was significant. I don't know if we're ever going to know exactly or precisely how significant. And I, again, the word "highly contaminated areas" is a limiting phrase to me. And if that's what the EPA wants to have cleaned up, and that's it, and leave whatever's south of a highly contaminated area without remediation, I-- so, I don't think the legal aspect of this is over by a long shot.
No, and that interim action may be-- may be all we get for a very long time.
Yeah.
Until there's a lot of losses as it is, we're only getting that interim action after a very long time. But in that very long time period, the town has still not, in my opinion, been fairly compensated for the loss of that resource. We've gotten a water line and some money to pay for the MWRA hookup, but that pales in comparison to what we should be getting, what we should have gotten at this point, in my opinion, to Olmen. And I think that maybe the board ought to start thinking in those terms.
I was just going to comment on the suggestion that we've headed on autopilot here for the last 15 or 20 years. I would suggest that that's absolutely not accurate. The town has engaged environmental consulting services with GeoInsight for many, many years. Town council, Dan Deutsch has been involved for 20, 20-plus years. You know, the pursuit of damages is certainly an issue that is on the radar screen. The fact of the matter is that timing matters. And so, I would suggest that that is still on the table, but it is completely not accurate to suggest we've been on autopilot.
I was referring to reconsultment work. I was referring to the legal aspect.
Thank you. Yes?
If I could just piggyback on Mr. Eaton's comments, that certainly, just want to remind folks at home that we've invested a lot of money to make sure that we've retained special town council, Mr. Dan Deutsch. When, back this past summer, we had to buy-- we had to appoint a new town council. We made it a point, I think it was a priority for most of the members on the board, that we retain him, because we didn't want to skip a beat when it comes to this particular issue. That was the only issue that we did this, and we've invested a lot of money in that, because Mr. Deutsch, as you mentioned, does bring about 20 to 25 years of experience to this matter. So, it's important. And I, you know, we've had conversations with him, and I know that he's working really hard for us, and I'm grateful for that.
Anyone else just-- Mr. West, have you spoke?
Frank West, to break the road. Just a quick comment. As you guys are starting this economic advisory committee, just a word of, for lack of a better term, caution, in that I sat here several months ago when then-Secretary Ash, now former Secretary Ash, was talking about, you know, one way of expediting permitting our usage, you know, for businesses to come in, is to do a lot of things behind the scenes and, you know, not necessarily-- again, not skirt the public process, but in some respects, it sounded like he was talking about skirting the public process. And I'm sorry that, you know, there are businesses that may need several months between planning boards, Board of Appeals, Conservation, whatever, to get going. But that's part of the public process. So, my comment is to say, just as we banter former Secretary Ash's name around, I just say that a lot of what he was suggesting may or may not necessarily be in the best interest in the actual town people here in Wilmington.
So, to that point, Sir, please feel like you might be alluding to the individual that I had referenced that works at--
I'm not alluding to any of your members. I'm-- excuse me for interrupting today, John, but I'm just-- I'm making my comment specific to what Senator-- former Senator Ash said here at this table to this board. Not-- I'm not talking about any member of your prospective member of your committee.
My-- I can't remember if you were here or not, but I had appointed somebody that works at Highland Electronics, but is also a longtime resident of the town as well. I also don't think that behind-the-scenes type of thing, or fast-tracking something, is something that this community wants to see. But certainly, there's-- there might be some pain points that I'm not aware of that could be certainly done without--
Between meetings?
I don't even know what those pain points really are, I guess, is the point, which is why, you know, I certainly appointed somebody who would have more experience in knowing what that process was, so that process could be shared with other people in the Economic Development Committee, so that discussion could take place as to what are the-- any points that we could make improvements while also preserving the opportunity for the public to protect the, I guess, the nature of the community. So, I'm certainly-- I'm like-minded with you. I don't want us to start adopting procedures that are encouraging backroom deals, aside from the public eye. But there might be points that exist right now that we could improve upon while preserving the public's right to know.
Again, I'm not-- I'm not talking about any particular member of the board itself. I'm just, again, Senator, you know, former Secretary Ash was mentioned several times in your group, and I just-- I heard what he had to say that night, and I was, you know, in some respects disappointed. Can some things be fast-tracked a little bit faster than we are doing things here in town? Probably, yeah. But in the same token, is that there is a public process, and I think for the benefit of the town, we just want to see that public process preserved.
Yeah, my point in referencing former Secretary Ash was more that it was, I think, a very important part of the Economic Development Committee process discussion, not because I necessarily agree with a lot of the things that he had to say. He's a knowledgeable individual, but he's not from Wilmington. So, I might-- we're all accountable to the constituents of Wilmington, not former Secretary Ash.
Mr. Chairman, just through you, I would just like to tell them, I apologize if you thought I was harsh. I didn't think that I was. I apologize for that. But I would like to say, the gentleman to your right, is that Mr. Marselli a candidate for selectmen?
Yes.
Okay, that's all. And I'm going to say to you, good luck, sir. All right. Thank you.
Yes.
He didn't speak yet. Oh, thank you. All right. So, I guess this question's for Mr. Hall. There are some selecting candidates who have requested to go and visit at the senior center and have been told they cannot visit. I would think every building is open to the public. Any selecting candidate should have a chance to go in and talk to the folks at the senior center. So, why would they-- why would people be told by the director of the center that they're not welcome?
I don't know that they were told they were not welcome, but the senior center is not a place for campaigning.
Okay, but they can go and visit any of the people there at any time, right? They can at least go and introduce themselves, not campaign.
Yeah, they can go to the center, but again, this is not a campaign forum. The town hall, the library, the senior center are not campaign forums for representatives running for selectmen.
But if any citizen can go into the senior center or the library, whatever, like, I know--
Oh, absolutely. Any resident is free to go into any of the public buildings.
Okay, all right. The next thing I have is, back to my favorite topic of all time. I know you guys always wait for me to show up here with something new. So, the Pioneer Institute reported that the S&amp;P has downgraded Massachusetts based on the fact they don't have an OPEB plan, or the OPEB plan is currently 12.2% of the overall Massachusetts state budget. Knowing that last year, you guys held to the AA+ but certainly didn't get upgraded, and I believe, well, I know you got a warning from the S&amp;P as to what the OPEB plan is. So, what percentage of our overall budget does our current OPEB stand for Wilmington?
What percentage of the overall budget?
Yeah. So, the S&amp;P downgraded Massachusetts because OPEB liabilities were over 12% of the Massachusetts budget. So, what is our percentage of OPEB with the Wilmington budget?
Well, the Wilmington budget is-- you're talking about the operating budget. The OPEB liability, the complete liability, is just rough numbers. I'm going to say 70% of the operating budget, but we are not unique to that issue. I know you continue to pursue this with a lot of diligence. The fact of the matter is, we continue to put serious amounts of money aside into the OPEB long-term liability issue. I don't believe it's prudent to take all of the excess funds that the town has and put it into that issue. We've got many competing demands. We have the pension liability, which we're addressing, the need to replace buildings throughout town to the tune of $143.5 million OPEB. So, there's a lot of issues out there that the town has to deal with. And my understanding and expectation is that when S&amp;P sees that a community is being consistent, that we are not, you know, invest-- putting in $5 million one year and none the next, but we're consistently putting in $1 million plus, that that is a reasonable approach. There are, as far as I know, very few communities in the Commonwealth that have fully funded OPEB, or even close to fully funding OPEB. We're taking it a year at a time. We're putting $1 million a year. Again, that's the recommendation this year amongst the other competing needs. So, you know, can we be putting more? Yeah, I suppose we can be putting more. The question becomes, what services do we take off the table so we can fully fund OPEB?
Right. So, we put $1 million in last year, and based on your numbers that I saw from morning reports online, it climbed close to $8 million. So, we certainly, I mean, we're going to continuously fall behind on this. And I know one of the comments that we all shared about six months ago with the town accountant was that it's not just a matter of funding, it's a matter of restructuring the plan, which I think, in general, is just unfair overall to all the town employees. I mean, they've been-- this has been in the contracts for years. And to now start reducing that and asking them to pay more and everything else, I think is unrealistic, right? I mean, it's just as unrealistic as saying that we need to fund more money. I just think, overall, it's being unfair to our town employees.
There is no unfairness to the town employees. The town employees continue to get health insurance. The town employees continue to have the town of Wilmington paying 75% of their health insurance while they're active employees. The town of Wilmington continues to pay 75% of the retiree portion of their health insurance when they retire. That has not changed in the 30-plus years that I've been here, and I don't foresee it happening in the near term. So, you know, in terms of the concern about the employees, they are-- they are being treated very well, in my estimation.
As current employees, but clearly, down the line, it's just going to continue to add up, right? And to bring it back to myself, I mean, so, as you know, I've already quoted this. The Mass Municipal Association has an article out on October 16, 2016, that said the dark cloud of OPEB, and stating that every household can expect to pay close to $30,000 over the next 25 to 30 years to make this up, this gap up. So, since we're the majority of the people, and the households here are the majority that are going to pay off these debts, I mean, certainly, part of it is, I'm worried about what my tax bill is going to look like down the line. So, I mean, do you disagree with your own association that this is a dark cloud on the horizon?
Oh, I agree that it's a challenge, just as the pension liability is a challenge. I guess I'm a little puzzled. On the one hand, you express concern about the town employees, which I've indicated they are not being harmed by this. But quite frankly, one way of addressing OPEB is to reduce the benefits that we're providing to town employees. So, if, in fact, you really want to make a dent in OPEB, then we ought to ratchet back the town's contribution from maybe 75% to 50% or 60%. So, I don't know where you're coming from.
Where I'm coming from is, ratchet back the buildings. You're talking about $143 million you want to put into buildings. Take back that stuff, put that towards our retirement fund that we need to have funded by 2034. Take back that funding and put it towards OPEB, right? I mean, because otherwise, someday down the line, it is going to come back, and you're going to come to all household taxpayers of Wilmington, and we won't be unique, which is what I constantly hear from this board. But you're going to say to everybody in this town, you either override Prop 2.5, or we're going to have to start cutting all these services. And before we get to that, I just want to have a better plan in place. So, at least, if we have to do it, it's not this kind of gap, it's this kind of gap, right?
Just want to make sure I clarify one thing. I wish we did, but we don't have $134 million just sitting there. That's the estimated projection for all the projects. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that that's the estimated amount for the total, if we did all the projects, right? Certainly, we're not going to tackle them all anytime soon.
So, the next big project down the line is town hall and, I believe, the senior center, right? $22 million is what's allocated in the year 2022. What's that?
Guess it's depending on who you ask, right?
Right.
So-- So, anyway--
Those are-- there's no commitments to any of that. The plan is a plan, and ideally, there will be a conversation, a substantive conversation going forward about decisions that the town should be making on these facilities. The intent of that facilities plan was to look at the buildings that we have. We have a 1934, 35 senior center. We have-- this building was built in '58 or '59. You know, these buildings are-- have been well utilized. And at some point in time, you know, perhaps after I'm gone, but somebody is going to have to deal with the requirement of building facilities that accommodate the people who work in them, as well as the taxpayers who utilize those services. So, this facility plan was designed to say, based upon $2,017, the estimated cost, if you were to repair everything or replace everything today in 2017 at that point, was $143.5 million. That number continues to go up. We're certainly not going to be able to do that all at-- We're certainly not gonna be able to do that all at one time, but I think it's advisable for the town to begin to address those issues in a measured way, as well as addressing OPEB, as well as addressing pension in these large-scale costs that the town has.
Okay, so I'd prefer that we just take care of the people in the buildings instead of the buildings, but, all right, thanks, I know all of my time. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. McDonald.
Kara, I grew up in a hockey family where both me and my brother played hockey, and my father coached, I think, three teams at one time. I'd like to talk a little bit about the hockey rink, and I did have an extensive sit-down conversation with the chief financial officer of the company that's building the Ledges project, but before I talk about that, I just want to offer a couple of quick comments. Mr. Eaton, with regard to Olin, I failed to mention that there are two other chemical companies that were part of that whole contamination issue. The executive vice president sent me a consent agreement, and the other two chemical companies are Built Right Corporation and Step In Chemical. And with regard to declaring it a crime scene or not declaring a crime scene, you mentioned that it's the police's job. Well, the Board of Selectmen is over the manager, and the manager is over the police chief, and so I don't think that the board should defer responsibility to somebody that's under you. I just wanted to make that comment.
I just want to clarify one thing. I didn't mean to suggest, and I certainly hope I did not leave the impression, or anybody with the impression, that the police are not doing their job at all. In fact, I think that the police department is doing a very fine job. It's just not something that is directly within the authority of the Board of Selectmen to be declaring a crime scene. It's just, it's just not-
Well, if you're not willing to do it, I would suggest bringing in the Attorney General and having a public hearing and having some serious discussion about this before they start to clean it up, because as you know, lawsuits are very expensive and take a lot of time. The town right now has an opportunity. I suspect they wouldn't want to do it, but the site right now has very low value, being a contaminated site. I don't have the confidence that it's gonna be completely cleaned up, because as you know, there are certain levels of contamination that allow projects to be developed, and that refer to as Brown's Fields development. I really don't want this project to be a Brown's Field development. It's my desire that it be completely cleaned up. I made the suggestion that we have a project almost right next door with about, close to a half a million yards of material, clean material, solid structural fill that could be replacing that material. Olin, their yearly revenue is $5.5 billion. They're a multinational company. So if you would, just put a little thought into that this week about some remedy for the town. If the town could take that property by eminent domain before the value goes up too much, and then still have an agreement with the three chemical companies that polluted it, the town could be in control of that development.
Kevin, you were gonna bring up about the rink and something else?
Yeah, well-
Go there.
My, first of all, if you look up in the dictionary the word "economy," it's simply defined as a system for creating wealth. And in terms of government, they never seem to be looking in terms of how to create wealth, but rather they look at, let's just take more money from the taxpayers. My vision for a hockey rink is simply this. First of all, we had two hockey rinks at Upton Drive, and that was sort of insufficient at the time. So one hockey rink, I still think is insufficient. I think we should, we should build two hockey rinks, and I'd like to propose how we do it, by bringing private enterprise in to do it. And it would be kinda nice to have it on the Olin site, and it'd be kinda nice to have it funded by Olin. And I think what we could do is we could have a destination place, where we could have two hockey rinks, we could have a mixed-use development, we could have senior housing, we could have veterans housing, and receive money from the federal government to support that.
Could I ask you a quick question?
I really don't interrupt you, Mr. Bendel.
I wanted to ask a question. Can I ask a question? Yeah, so are you suggesting that we can't get, for 30 years, we've been trying to get Olin to clean up the site, they don't want to do that, now you think they're gonna build us a hockey rink?
I gotta tell you what happened. I got on the phone with the CEO's office of Olin. I got on the phone with the executive vice president in charge of environmental cleanup, and I told him they're about to have a public relations nightmare. We have wells that were shut down. Because those wells are not being pumped, and this is before all of this thing about a high-priority site on the federal government's list came out, so I suspect maybe they got shook up a little bit. And what I told them is, because our wells have been shut down and the water's not being pumped, these chemicals could possibly be flowing, not just to the town of Wilmington, but to downstream communities, and I think that's a major disaster for Olin. And I think it would be in their best interest to completely clean the site up and to avoid a public relations nightmare and further damage other towns. And so I think it's a real possibility that that half a million cubic yards of material that's coming out of the Ledges project can be filled in at the Olin site, and have all of that contaminated material be put on trains and taken to a line and landfill. I think that's a real possibility. Maybe not probable, but if we put our heads together, we could probably do something that accomplishes something great. With regard to the Ledges project, I sat down with the CFO of the company, and there are 90-foot cuts there, and what they're, they should be starting blasting this week. There's been some concerns about trucking, there's been concerns about vibration, dust, all of that sort of thing. The town has just lost some lawsuits. The cell tower, they're about to enter into a lawsuit with the detox folks, and so I just want to warn you to be a little bit careful as to how you handle this situation. Trucks have run in and out of Old Main Street to the dump for years. MBTA buses park there. AL Prime parks there. There's a lot of vehicles that park there. So if you think that you're gonna close that road down to any truck traffic that's related to the Ledges project, I would just warn you on any further liability and losses that the town might suffer with regard to legal matters. In the town, I suggested the last meeting that-
Let's talk about them.
Excuse me, Mr. Hall?
I don't know what you're talking about. We're not looking to close down Old Main Street, so-
You spoke about trucks not being able to park there, travel there.
What I indicated in my memo to the Board of Selectmen, Mr. McDonald, was that there has been concern about vehicles parking on Old Main Street, and I suggested that the board not take any action with respect to establishing no parking areas on Old Main Street, because there doesn't appear at the moment to be any issues, and in fact, it may be negatively impacting the businesses in Wilmington that are on Old Main Street. So I don't think that, that's an issue at the moment.
Okay, the other thing I suggested was for the town to look into obtaining material from that site. The town has sidewalk projects, they've been talking about unaccepted ways, they have different times when they have to repair streets where a water main breaks, and so this material can be obtained very, very inexpensively, and I'd like the board to reach out and see if that, if that's possible. With regard to the ice rinks, really, the town doesn't need any more tax burden. If you've noticed, all the self-storage places and the storage facilities that are going up, the reason why they're going up is because people are being forced out of their homes, and other people can't realize the American dream of owning a home anymore because of out-of-control prices. And so I really don't want to force any more people out of town by impacting them with any more taxes. And one of the things I've been saying for years is that I think it's offensive to come to the people and tell them, this is what our budget's gonna be, when you know it's over-budgeted to get money into free cash. I think that's a complete lie. I think it's a fraud, and I think it's completely irresponsible for this board to not rein in this manager for doing that. We don't, free cash is not-
You've had about, you've had about 15 minutes.
I'm just finishing up right now.
You wrapping it up? You wrapping it up being civil and not confrontational?
Absolutely. I just wanted to simply close with this. Free cash is not, not established by savvy management. It's basically established by stealing from the taxpayers through fraudulent overbidding.
Thanks, Kevin.
And the last thing I'll say, there was a project, okay, at the center of town, the metro station project, it sold four years ago for $29 million. I got, I got the tax records, they're only being taxed at $19 million. So we have a problem with our assessing in town, we have a problem with our budgeting, and I think we have a problem with respecting the taxpayers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kara. Yes.
I want to agree with Selectman Bendel in that probably no, at no time in the sustainable or any time future will we see $143 or whatever million dollars to be able to spend on these, you know, buildings and all that. It's my hope, and I think the taxpayers hope that whatever the cost, you know, if that $143 million or whatever over time is done through a, through a combination of free cash, potential match from state and federal grants, depending when it comes to the schools and all, so I would, I would hope, like I said, is that, you know, whatever the bill ends up being, that the manager, and whoever the Selectmen are at the time, and the finance committee, et cetera, will make sure that they borrow prudently and also apply for the appropriate grants to give us the biggest bang, so.
Okay, all right, we all set here?
So I have to agree with Mr. McDonald that when you take a look at the assessor's office and what they're, you know, putting out to individual households, there's a huge difference between, like myself, I'm up $128,000, and there's some houses in town, and I looked at 2008 to 2018, and there's houses that are losing money. I mean, how is that possible? So I do agree with his comment that how do we get this under control? How do we understand the exact guidelines that the assessor is using for both households and businesses?
I just have a question.
No, I think that's it. No, no, that's it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just answer the question for, is that I would contact the assessor's office. She's always been very knowledgeable and accessible. Anytime I've had to ask her a question, I would encourage you to reach out. I don't, I don't know the specifics of each household's value, but she, she may, and she's always been very informative, so I would encourage you to reach out to her.
Well, that's great. We have yours, and mine, so it'll be great.
Sounds good. It's public record.
All right, thank you. That's it. Okay, let's move on to announcements. Anyone? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to, one last time, but he certainly deserves it, is to thank our retiring Chief Begonis, and welcome our new Chief Police Joe Desmond, who was with us here this evening, was sworn in on Friday. We want to wish him well, certainly. I want to give a shout-out tonight to a, to a veteran, a longtime Wilmington resident who passed away unfortunately this past Saturday at the age of 95. Bill Smith was a Purple Hot recipient in the US Army, and it's only fitting that we're talking about Deming Way earlier tonight, because he was one of the people who was very influential in having Deming Way built back in the 1950s, so I want to send my condolences to his family, and we're grateful for his service. So, and lastly, I want to just wish everybody a very happy Easter, and to my colleagues.
Yeah, we received a, another recognition for Yentile Recreational Facility. This is from the Massachusetts Recreation and Parks Association. The Massachusetts Recreation Park Association Annual State Award presented for excellence in the field of design of facility. Yentile Farm Recreational Facilities Wilmington, Mass, presented on March 27, 2019. Our recreation director went down to that ceremony and received that award, so that's very nice.
And it was $25,000 cubic yards of rich fertile farm, and it was a great-
And, yes, okay, that's it for announcements. On to new business. Got new business, Walter?
I'll just say real quick, I'm in full agreement with Suzanne Sullivan. We need to, we need to take care of Olin and remediate it and, before any development goes on. And Suzanne, you're gonna be a great choice on the economic development. Thank you.
Yes, all set? All set?
So important dates, we have brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM on April 10th. April 10th, also the Wetlands Resource Area and Conservation Land Library Lecture Memorial Library at 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM. April 13, brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. April 15, town offices closed for Patriots Day. April 16, Town Forest Nature Walk, 3:00 PM. April 17, brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. April 20, brush drop off, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. April 20, Little League Opening Day Parade, 9:30. Also on April 20, the Easter Egg Scramble, Town Common, 2:00 PM. April 22 is the next Board of Selectmen's meeting here in room 9, 7:00 PM. April 24, brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The 27th of April is the annual town elections. Polls open at 8:00 AM, close at 8:00 PM. April 27, Spring Town Cleanup Day, 8:30 AM. Also on the 27th, brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. On the 27th, Drug Takeback Public Safety Building, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And then again, on the 27th, Land Stewardship Program Introduction Workshop, 1:00 PM. May 4, the annual town meeting, High School Auditorium, 10:30 AM. And just a reminder, plastic bag ban goes into effect on May 5.
That's it. I want to wish everybody a happy Easter, and there's a motion to adjourn.
Someone.
Mr. Eaton, second by Mr. Bendel. Any discussion, all in favor? Thank you, and good night.